I'm the San Marcos City Council. Today is Friday, January thirty first. The time is eight forty one. Ms. Trevino, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez. Here, Mr. Saul Gonzalez.
Here.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Uh, here.
Mr. Scott. Mr. Mendoza.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez. We have a corn present.
All right, and I believe you said that we didn't have anybody signed up for Susan's comments. All right, then we will roll into item one.
Full discussion and participate in fiscal year two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six visioning workshop. Topics discussed may or may not include or be limited to growth, quality of life, economic development policies, transportation, community partners, outreach, future infrastructure and facility needs, beautification and community enhancement, enhancement of core services, including future staffing and personnel needs, flood mitigation strategies, and provide direction to staff. Ms. Reyes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for a productive day yesterday. So we got through two of the strategic planned priorities. And so today, we will be going through the remaining three. And then, of course, we can always revisit if there's anything that y'all wanted to revisit on the first two, then we can absolutely do that as well. But your entire team is here to to support and inform and provide any information that you need or anything that we can follow up on. So thank you and look forward to another good and productive day.
Chantel. There you go.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I thank you so much. I thank you for yesterday. I know that we had a productive day. Thank you, Council, Mayor, staff, city manager. This was really amazing. As you know, we have three more goals today. We're gonna go ahead and get into them. The remaining goals that we do have on Just Republic, my name is Chantel Seymour again, and I'll be facilitating a session. We'll be getting into economic vitality. We also are gonna do public safety, core services, and fiscal excellence. And then the third, we will go with environmental protection. That will be the order. Right? So we'll go ahead and just begin right here with this particular one. We had some comments. I do realize that possibly council members that may have made the comments aren't there, aren't here. So I guess if you know or have any addition, additional responses or know about that, their perspectives on it, if you wouldn't mind sharing. The first we have is bring in working class perspective of economic vitality. And just to remind everyone of the goal statement for this one, it's foster a vibrant economic climate for our community through new commercial and residential uses, education, workforce development, and support of new and existing businesses of all sizes. And again, the comment is bring in working class perspective. Any thoughts upon that comment from Council?
I know that for many years, we were focused on, you know, the big companies coming in. Uh, we certainly have added to that focus for small business incentives, et cetera. Mr. Pantaleon would be able to provide more information on that. But we have done that, so um. Something else that we have done is whenever we have a prospect who's looking for incentives, we're asking about the jobs. And we used to grill them pretty good, but now the agency that brings them to us knows what we're looking for. Uh, we don't want that average across the whole board. We wanna know what the different tiers are going to be making, et cetera. So we do examine that to see what is it for the workers? And if they're not offering benefits, they're not even at the table.
Thank you.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Joe Pantalean, Assistant City Manager. Um, just to elaborate on the mayor's comment. Uh, real this, the expansion of our philosophy around economic development started really around three or four years ago, where there was a realization that with the resources that we had for economic development, primarily being funneled to the, at the time called Greater San Marcos Partnership, which has done a wonderful job and, and, you know, has gone out and tried to land the big projects, right? And that's typically what you see with most economic organizations. Uh, but as we looked at the needs across our community, uh, there was definitely a need to to focus on our existing and upcoming small businesses and local businesses. And what we did was started with our economic development policy. Uh, there was an overhaul, um, that's, you know, started in two thousand and twenty, and I believe Council adopted the new policy in two thousand and twenty two that really expanded the types of programs that we wanted to support. And they were aspirational at the time because they allowed for additional programs like a legacy business program, like a small business retention program, provided for sustainability grants, provided for infrastructure grants for small businesses. So with that policy in place, then we went about the business of operationalizing it. Um, and that that needs money, right? And with limited resources, what we did, and this council, many of you voted uh, through the last budget to allow us to move forward with a modification of the uh, development, uh, Economic Development Partnership contract to reduce that contract to help fund a new position within the city for business retention and working with small businesses. And as I mentioned yesterday, we are literally a week or two away from hiring that position. Um, so thank you for allowing us to do that. Uh, we are also, again, focusing on setting up some of those programs that were made possible by the policy change. Uh, we've stood up our legacy business program. Uh, we've also are working on the sustainability grants. And, you know, quite, you know, notably, I I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge not only the work of Christian Smith, who is our single person dedicated to economic development fully right now. We have one person in this workspace, but, you know, he is assisted by so many people here. And especially just, I'd like to acknowledge Griselle, uh, who just did yeoman's work as we administer the small minority business grants that were distributed as part of the ARPA funds. Uh, those came in very handy. We saw the need. It gave us an opportunity to work hand in hand with a lot of the same small businesses that we wanna support. So thank you, Mayor, for that opportunity.
Yeah, we had the, and I forget what it was called for downtown. A lot of people just started calling it the awning grant because that's what a lot of people used it for, and we had the B I G grant. So we've had some, but we're doing way more for the for the little guys than what we have in the past.
Uh, yes, and we plan to even expand that once we get this new position in place that can be dedicated solely in that arena.
There was another comment around that, um, making it easier for people to do business, such as permits.
And I can speak to that just real quickly. I know we we kind of spoke to that yesterday, but, um, you know, when you, when you talk about permitting, I think really it's a matter of understanding kind of what goes into permitting, right? And it's a two-way street. It's communication between the applicant, the people that wanna build something, and the city staff that are, um, uh, required to administer our city code. So you look at the the people, the the process, and our policies. There are multiple departments in the city that touch that process, uh, primarily the Planning and Development Services Department, but it's the Engineering Department. It's the Utilities Department and this gentleman right next to me. And as we work through those spaces, um, you know, we we need to understand that, um, you know, as far as the types of issues we see, uh, you know, we we talked about trends, and there are some trends. And if you allow me just real quickly to have maybe, uh, Ms. Hernandez, our Planning Director, speak to some of that. And then I'd like Sean, I don't know, putting him on the spot, uh, Mr. Condor, to speak to our watershed protection plans because it's interesting that, you know, there's this, uh, uh, kind of a, I wanna call it a double-edged sword because that sounds aggressive, but a dichotomy of where, you know, we are a very environmentally sensitive and flood-prone area. And this council has long supported the need to protect our existing citizens, especially as new developments arise. So we pay particular attention to that. And, you know, we're not unlike, say, San Antonio or Austin, where we have a very mature set of codes that help to address that issue, but those reviews take time. So, Mr. Condor, if you could just speak very briefly to that, maybe after Ms. Hernandez.
Yeah, so this kind of goes back to what we talked about yesterday with Councilmember Garza saying that you guys don't always see what we do internally to make process improvements. And one of the things I brought up yesterday was that review list that goes out to make sure permits don't fall through the cracks. So I started to go back and think about what have we done in the past few years? Well, we had a very development-focused city manager's office and city council even just a couple of years ago. And we were very lucky to receive some extra staff in our department. So what we've been able to do is have more people available to to take on that influx of permits that we've seen. And we also have been able to do more cross-training. And with the Engineering Department, same, they hired a couple of new people. They're doing more cross-training. They have more people reviewing watershed protection plans. And where we used to send reviews out to a third-party reviewer, now we're able to do those in-house. We're actually saving some money because we put that focus on the development process just a couple of years ago. And just another point for, you know, third-party, we can't always cross-train and have enough staff. Inspectors are really hard to find. Inspectors make a lot of money when they're in the private sector, so it's hard for us to get inspectors. We have an on-call third-party inspection company that if one of our inspectors calls in sick, we can call them up and they will send someone out to make sure that those processes keep moving.
Sure. So in regards to the watershed protection plans, that's probably the number one complaint you're gonna hear. Um, and the reason you you hear that is because we're overly critical. We don't let stuff slide. We don't just rubber-stamp stuff. And these developers wanna go, 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 but we're gonna make sure it's reviewed and it's reviewed right. Uh, but to address that, in the past, we have recently, well, the last couple of years, we've hired three new positions within the engineering development team to help speed up that process. When I say hire, we hired two new positions and we transferred one from the C I P group over to the development engineering group. So we have three more resources over there. Um, what the trend we've heard is basically we were getting complaints two or three years ago before we had that extra staff. Since then, the complaints have died off significantly. And the ones who are complaining are typically the folks that we worked with two or three years ago that have that history of that taking a long time to get through. So we're we're making strides. We have more than one person reviewing things now. We have two dedicated watershed planning reviewers, and we're trying to train up the other younger engineers as well to become good at that. So the the trends or the complaints will die down, but you're still gonna get those, those folks that have been with the city for ten, fifteen years going through the process that we just gotta break that habit of, it's not the way it used to be. We're we're doing things a lot better now.
I I have a question about that is, and that's where sometimes it reaches my level, which is how I found out that the Bieber place was coming. Um, but what is the process? Well, most of them, the promises get back with to you within thirty days, correct?
That's our goal.
Okay. So when that doesn't happen, is there something that lands on your desk that lets you know that there's something that maybe needs more help, maybe needs some attention? So something doesn't go, oh, say fifty-six days and counting?
So is, we have a list that we keep internally that tracks the status of these permits. And so to say, I know they're out there, they're happening, but one thing we're doing to help broaden that communication, the developers are looking at maybe a platform that lets them see where they are in the queue, if you will. And so, um, that's, we're hoping to get that with the next year or so, to tell the developers where they're going. But, I mean, these watershed reviews, they they take days to do. They're not something they can review in an hour or two. They're typically, uh, you know, a sixteen-hour process to review a watershed plan. So it's it's a, the lengthy process, and you have twenty or thirty in the queue, it can, it can really add up, so.
But my question is, when it gets past the thirty days, does something special happen? And and that's more in your area, but either one, uh, does does some? I'm not talking about a red flashing light in the office, although that'd be okay if that was yours.
We do kind of have a red flashing light, actually, that review list that I was telling you about. And I'm sure Sean doesn't, doesn't really look at it as much as probably Richard does. But when those permits are coming due within the next five days or week, they turn, we make them yellow. And when they're overdue, and even overdue, like in the next couple of days, they show up red. So.
Is that in My Permit Now?
It's actually separate from My Permit Now. We're working with My Permit Now and some upgrades, so hopefully it'll generate automatically. Um, but our permit technicians put it together, send it out to every plan reviewer. So whether it's engineering, planning, utilities, drainage, if it's their review that's coming due or their review that's overdue, their box will be red and yellow. So it's just opening that up and then making sure that the managers know to go kind of push those along if they're able to be pushed.
That was my question is, is, I I think the reviewers probably know, but does management know? So again, you know, has there been somebody out on vacation? You know, do we need to shift some resources? Um, that kind of thing. So it's good to see that there's mechanism by which we we see that coming. And my question is, what do we do?
Do we, do we, is there, what do we do in terms of also, so the alerts are one thing, right? To let us know that something is going on. What kinds of communication do we have with the person who's applying for the permit? And then what do we do to look at trends for, um, process improvements?
Sure. So, uh, one of the trends we're doing to improve the process is really get that external platform where they can see where they're at. A lot of times what they'll do now is they'll call us and ask for an update where it's at. What can I tell them whether they are in the queue? Um, we do have the ability. We have looked at possibly having the developer pay for a third-party review where they say, hey, I don't want to go through the city process. I want to pay someone to do it, and it'll move them up the line, but they're gonna pay the fee to do that review. So we've had those internal conversations. We haven't gotten to the point where we've actually enacted that. Um, we are talk possibly having it in our wastewater treatment plant development agreement. We had that as an opportunity. If they want to pay for a fast review, they could do that as well. So that's something we're looking at. Um, just, we feel internally that we've made strides on improving that process, and I don't think, and our goal is to keep getting there and putting more resources to get there. Um, and did I answer your?
But I guess.
Yeah, my my question remains unanswered.
I I think that the thing is, okay, because to to the person who is applying, they may not have all the history of like, oh, this is better than two years ago, right? So what are we doing to make that individual experience so we know it's overdue? Are we reaching out to them to say, we're sorry we're overdue? It's gonna be another couple of days. We'll be in touch with you. This is what, you know, hang up is or whatever, just that customer experience aspect of it. And then the second thing is holistically, how are we looking at the process improvements to make sure that if we're seeing it always get tied up in this particular phase of things, what do we need to do to ensure that we're improving the process going forward?
And I'll I'll take a shot at the first question, then I'll let, uh, Ms. Condor and Ms. Hernandez maybe answer the more global, uh, oriented question. As far as reaching out, and of course, you know, our staff strives to provide that individualized customer service. And it's it's really important because all of these permits are an individual conversation at the end of the day, right? Uh, but we also need to understand that we've tasked staff with having individual conversations with a very high-volume number of permits that come through the city. And I, and Ms. Hernandez, maybe you you can share some of those numbers. So what really what we are striving for is to find that balance between that individual conversation, but also the need to optimize the resource that we have as far as our staff that do these reviews. And I think, you know, the the thing that we are putting a lot of emphasis on is if we can get the tools that we have now, the 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 My Permit Now, to provide for that automated, hey, the thirty-day window has passed here, log in, see where you are in the queue to, you know, because I think for us to be able to have an individual conversation that, oh, we passed a deadline, but, you know, we'll get to you, that, you know, that may not be the best use of our time, given that that's gonna be a a lot of, uh, calls and that that time being taken away from actually doing the reviews. We wanna do that, and and to the degree that we can get resource to do it, we'll strive to do that. But if we can use technology to allow someone to know that, hey, their permit turns red, and here, this is exactly where you are in the queue. We may not have gotten to you in thirty days, but you're, looks like you're gonna be up in thirty-four days. And that is automated so that our staff isn't having to take a thirty-minute conversation. That's what, that's where we'd like to be. And then.
But here's, here's my my point. And you've heard me say this many times. We need to look at this, as Ms. Reyes was talking about, from the customer's viewpoint. You may have all this stuff going, but if they're sitting out here and it's gone past thirty days and they don't know what's going on, that that's an issue. Here's what I'm sort of liking it to. It's my understanding, at least the previous incarnation of the S M T X Connect. If I report a pothole, and I don't know what the standard number is, but somebody's got a number. And if that is not fixed and recorded in the system, it goes up a level to a supervisor. And at some level, it goes up one more. That's for a pothole. So I'm asking, do we have anything like that with this system? So somebody, one level up.
I think we have some feedback.
Lorenzo, your your microphone's on or somebody's is on? Um, that's, that's my original question that we still haven't gotten to.
And I think the the directors do have that internally. Um, and as far as the, you know, what we would like to have is to have that automatic notification back to the customer using My Permit Now, but let me let the director speak to how those get elevated and to answer your point directly.
Thank you.
I'll just say, no, I do not believe we're automatically doing it. But we are looking at mechanisms, like I said, to automatically do it or even escalate them when they're, when it gets to that point.
So right now, we we know, but somebody has to go look.
We actually, in our department, have a manager that goes through all of the permits that are assigned to the Planning Department. And if they need to be shifted because something's taking too long, someone's workload is too high, then, yeah, we we manage that. But it would be a department-by-department thing. There's not an automated system that does that at this point. Um, and Joe asked me to look up a number. I did really quick. We issued almost fifty-five hundred permits in two thousand and twenty-four, and that includes all our sites, watersheds, buildings, and everything. So we've, we've got a lot of permits that come through our system. The numbers are a little bit down from what we saw five years ago, but we're still seeing that influx of permits.
And I think, you know, what what would be helpful for us is just to understand, you know, what are the standards that you, as council, would like for us to work towards? Because then that gives us a goal of where we should, um, make sure that our processes and our operations match that. So that would be helpful just to understand which y'all's, which y'all's goals are on it.
Um, my, mine is, is to follow our own expectations. And if it's the thirty days, it's the thirty days. I appreciate what Mr. Pantaleon is saying is get back with people. And even if that is an email, day twenty-five, you know, we're, we're, we are aware. I think that right there would be appreciated by many as, yeah, we're we're aware that we're behind, and this is what we're doing about it. Would be huge. It would, might mean fewer calls to the mayor because sometimes it's, I I I I don't know. But the other thing is the emailing back and forth. And if there's a misunderstanding on their part or our part, and it's fifteen, twenty, thirty days before that reaction is there, no, that's not what I meant. It was this, that thirty days keeps going, whereas a phone call would have been so much easier on that one thing. And I know you can't predict that, but sometimes talking to people is still a good thing. But I understand having an email on record.
I don't wanna lose the comment from Councilmember Saul Gonzalez, please.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, earlier, we talked about, y'all talked about inspectors. Although once we have well-rounded, what I mean by that is, are they licensed electricians, plumbers that do this? Or is it one person y'all hire and train to be able to do those inspections?
Yes, sir, they have to be licensed. We have in the past hired, you know, trainees, but then we give them six months to a year to take certain tests. And until they have the required certifications, they're not allowed to do any inspections on their own. So we do try to get our inspectors hired with their licenses so we can train them to our processes and get them out in the field.
That's good. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Uh, as far as what we're expecting from the notification system, I I, I mean, I echo everything that the mayor's already said. Um, it sounds like y'all are making great strides, though, and maybe it's a hot take. If we're taking additional time to make sure that a project is environmentally sound, I'm cool with that. And if people have an issue with that, they could probably talk to all of my other constituents who have sat there and waited years for a variety of other things. Um, so, uh, thank you for your work. I think also, though, for the notification system and just like the record-keeping of it all, to hear that y'all did that many permits is fantastic. And I think a lot of what we were talking about yesterday is so much of the work done here doesn't really translate well to the people. And that's why a lot of people complain, and sometimes their complaints are either rooted in sense or in fact or not. Um, and so perhaps when we're talking about notifications, taking all of that data, all of y'all's work, and really analyzing that year after year, that way people can realize that, okay, no, we are running an efficient operation. Um, and so I don't know if those two things go hand in hand. Um, but I also, though, yesterday, our conversation was talking about the review of, was it the development code? And so this review that we were, we, y'all were gonna be performing was also going to address some of, you know, the permitting process and how to better expedite that.
If there are process improvements that can be made in the code, yes, we'll be looking for those process improvements. Sometimes you have to, you know, jump through hurdles and come to city council for an approval, like Joe mentioned yesterday, that if council is comfortable with it being a staff approval or P and Z approval, that we could potentially make those changes to make the processes easier when appropriate.
Okay, so I mean, for the public watching, it sounds like this is coming. Um, it sounds like things will be brought to us to make this process, um, more expedient, more efficient. And so, um, but the notification process, I think that's doable. Um, and it also probably will take some of the flack off of y'all as well, letting people know what's happening, so.
And just one quick note on the, uh, the environmental issues and the floodplain issues. You know, looking and having worked with communities across the the state and even in Southeast United States, San Marcos is very unique. And, uh, we have a lot of the same and and very similar concerns with flooding. But when you step back and look at the map of San Marcos, when you see the San Marcos River, when you see the Blanco River, Purgatory Creek, and the large floodplains we have, we are a city that's blessed with wonderful environmental resources and streams and rivers. But those streams and rivers are natural systems that have large floodplains. So our community has an inordinate amount of floodplain area. And there is a lot of development, historic development from the the thirties, the forties, the fifties, you know, nineteen sixties that were built in these floodplains before the city of San Marcos had, you know, really stringent drainage criteria. Uh, and I say stringent, it's it's the same type of criteria that other cities have in Texas as far as, you know, do not build in a floodplain. A lot of it's based on FEMA require requirements, right? So I just wanted to note that for, uh, this body and also for the public that, uh, you know, when you're building in a floodplain, when you have an existing home or business in a floodplain, it really does create some obstacles that are not present, um, when you're not in the floodplain. And so it takes a little bit more of a view. It takes, uh, complying with, uh, some additional regulations that fall from, you know, federal to state to, you know, incorporated into our local policy. So again, just wanted to highlight that that's where the council.
And that is an important part, or important part, important point. So that when people come from other places and are perhaps unaware of this, is there something at the very beginning of our process, the welcome to San Marcos, this is what our development process is, to alert them that there's gonna be perhaps an extensive watershed, uh, plan, review, et cetera, et cetera, from the get-go?
Yes, ma'am. A lot of our developments require pre-development meetings. And in those meetings, we always have a representative from planning and engineering. And then if we need other departments, we bring them in. But yes, engineering talks about the watershed protection plan process in those pre-development meetings.
Okay, but that's when you've got new folks coming in for a large-ish development. What if somebody's already here and wanting to expand maybe their building and, uh?
We send others, yes, we send others to the pre-development meeting process. If it's not just a simple, you know, I need a permit to add a room onto my house, we don't send them to the, to the pre-development meeting process. But if someone's going to be doing site work and expanding their building, and it's a commercial building, we will send them through that process just so they have all the information they need when they're getting started.
Good, thank you.
I think there was another comment from.
Yeah, no, I mean, I just, I know yesterday, I was rewatching yesterday's meeting, and I know there was a lot of frustration thrown towards staff. But I mean, I I'm proud of that work. I've I've talked to, I've been able to talk to Mr. Pantaleon about all of the things I didn't know prior to taking this office. And so as somebody who's newer and got to see it from the outside in, um, it's almost like a D if you do, D if you don't. Uh, people get mad and they see development and they wanna know, well, how is that impacting our water? How is that impacting our environment? And so it sounds like our staff is doing the due diligence to make sure that we are being good stewards of the natural resources that we've been blessed with. And so I look forward to hearing how y'all plan to make that more efficient. Um, but genuinely, thank you for the work, and I know. Um, but genuinely, thank you for the work and I know our environment thanks you too. So.
Yeah, they do an amazing volume of work. I'm glad that we've been able to add some people. Um, so that you can get it done and maybe people get to go home at five. Um, and also I'm, I'm really happy that it's our people doing it. I, I, I like going outside if we need to, to get some volume taken care of. But whenever it's our folks that are being directed by y'all, um, I, I think that's probably better for everyone. So thank you all for, for what you're doing because I know that ninety-nine percent just go on through. Um, there's not a, the percent of complaints may not be high, but that's, that's what I hear. So when I hear it, I'm going, okay, you know, what can I bring to your attention? What can we maybe do better? Sometimes the expectations are just higher than what reality is going to take care of. Uh, some of the, some of what I hear has been about downtown. And it seems to me like if you're in a hundred-year-old building, there's probably just going to be more, um, more obstacles and more things going on. So, um, I understand that too. When I, when I hear, well, it takes longer to develop downtown. I'm thinking, yeah, that's probably the case. But again, setting expectations upfront. So thank you.
And Mary, you're exactly right. And that's where that economic development policy will come in handy in the future as we get this new position. We stand up more programs that are already approved by council that have, uh, are being staffed this year. Like the infrastructure assistance grants and things like that that can help exactly what you talked about for those downtown buildings.
Great. Thank you.
I want to make sure there's no other comments from, um, our council member there on, are online today. Council member Mendoza or council member Gonzalez.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I just want to say thank you for that. I, I know, you know, there are some things we can do better. I mean, we, we acknowledge that. And also that we can communicate, you know, because I think one of the things that's our tendency is, and it's a, it's a, it's a good and a bad. Is that staff definitely has a lot of can-do attitudes and we try to make things work within our existing resources. And so sometimes if we struggle, we just make it happen despite the struggle. We find a way to, to make it happen, whether it's that we have to hire contractors or we have to hire whomever just to kind of get those things going. Because we're trying to keep up with the expectations. And maybe one thing we can do better is just making sure we're always communicating when we are hitting those sticking points. Because we try not to bother y'all with those things. We try to just, again, make it happen. Um, and so that's something again that I'm learning through the discussion is that, okay, here are some areas where maybe we can even tell y'all, hey, we're, we're struggling with some of these resources because we know it takes money and we know that money's not plentiful. And so we know that we have to work within our, our means to get things done. And so that's something I just wanted to, to comment on and let y'all know that you do have a staff that definitely tries to work and problem solve and get things done where we possibly can. Again, we're not perfect and we're not going to be perfect, but we're going to try always to be better than we were before.
Yeah. As long as we're setting reasonable expectations and, and we stay in communications with the applicants. I think that, that goes a long way. I think we do that. Um, and sometimes applicants have an expectation, um, that they can't be met. Not that I just can't. So I get that.
Thank you for that awesome conversation. We do have a comment over here with council member Amanda. Explore menu of economic development options.
Uh, yes. Um, so I had something for outcome A regarding economic, uh, development policy and staff. If y'all want to help me refine this if necessary. Um, so duh, 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 duh. I was able to be fortunate enough to see our economic development plan and happy to see that we currently put a focus towards, uh, an employer's labor practices. I know that this accounts for twenty points in that overall evaluation. And so, um, you know, it was talked about earlier about how we want to pride ourselves on making sure that we are offering the best jobs for our people. And so my addition to this particular portion, and I did share it with Hayden, uh, would be to discover additional methods by which our economic development plan addresses and categorizes labor force practices. Focusing on how the company plans to assess and prioritize the needs and wellbeing of its workers. Um, I talked with city manager Reyes. I was happy to see that the city is wanting to become an employer of choice and everything that comes along with that. Um, but as I talk to her, I, you know, express it, I want that to extend to the rest of our people in the city. Um, and so I don't know if my particular addition is what we're looking for, but and or will accomplish that. But you know, I just want us to get another look at how we can look at those questions that we ask in that process and perhaps maybe that twenty points if we want to increase how much that's worth, exploring that too. So. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that. Wish I had the policy in front of me. I'll try to.
Oh, the economic, the questions that are asked?
I do. Thanks to Joe.
Something to remember, uh, Mr. Pentalian, correct me if I'm wrong. Our new economic development policy, when we're talking about these things that we want to see. Unfortunately, that only applies to those who are asking for incentives. They don't ask for incentives, we don't have the influence, correct?
That is correct.
And most of businesses that come through do not seek incentives.
That is correct. And you know, when, when you start talking about kind of a, a Texas city's role and opportunity to actually influence that, uh, we just need to be mindful of some of the guardrails that our state, um, places on, uh, its cities through the local government code as far as working in that arena, in that space. Um, I know that some of our, uh, nearby, uh, cities have attempted to, uh, pass regulations that have, uh, been undone by the state legislature. Uh, there's the preemption bill and things of that nature. So certainly we understand your, your interest and concern and can, and work and research kind of what we can do. Uh, but certainly we'll also have to be mindful of some of those, uh, other considerations.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with this. I just want to make sure the public or anybody else understands that this policy, it's where people are asking for things from us.
And so maybe we can clarify that and, and talk about, um, like companies that were incentivizing. Cause I think that was one of the things that, um, council member Rodriguez and I talked about was just, yes, it's regulation or incentive or incentivizing. And so, um, sometimes it can, it can look like we're just trying to regulate those businesses and that's happened like in Austin. And then the state legislature then, you know, and the court system, um, responded to that. So if it's really about making sure just that we're not giving public dollars, you know, for, for companies that do not, adhere to the types of practices that, that we're talking about. Um, so that's the main thing is I think it's just the companies receiving incentives. If y'all are, are good with that one ad, just to provide that clarification.
I, I, it should be clear because it's under economic development policy, but I agree if somebody pulls that out, we need to make sure that it's clear that those are the ones that we have some influence over.
So are y'all good with what Hayden added? Just, he just added the receiving incentives just to add further.
Okay. Go ahead and take the vote or additional comments? Do we have additional comments or questions for our council member online?
I, I, I think that's a great ad. Just again, if it's, if we just ensure that it's for the incentives. Uh, that's the important part. Um, but yes, I think it's a fantastic ad.
Okay. So do we have a thumbs up from you, council member Mendoza? Awesome. Thank you. And council member Gonzalez, Lorenzo, online? Any further comments, questions or thumbs up? You agree with the ad?
Yeah, I agree with it.
Okay. Thank you. Saul, thank you. Council member Amanda and Mayor Chang. Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. We can, um, move to the next. This was under business community. Um, the note was, um, literally no idea if the investments made during, I think it's planning even hit. Literally no idea if the investments made during, I think this is planning even hit. And I think they were going to write grant or tech support.
Maybe what I can do is take, take a shot at what I think that means and, uh, certainly, um, and I think this gets back to some comments that we've already heard this morning and yesterday, which is making sure that, uh, the services that are being provided by, by the city and our staff are, are fully not only understood, but also that we're reporting back to the community in terms of uh, the benefits, the successes, uh, and maybe some of the failures of what we're trying to do. So it's really, uh, a matter, I, I believe of, uh, of, uh, you know, providing that feedback loop that, you know, uh, our, our mayor and council, you mean, you provide us the resources to do our work. We have wonderful staff that goes out and, and does that work. A lot of times you see that in the CMO weekly, uh, some of the, the programs we're setting up, the, you see pictures of our citizens coming to public meetings. Uh, pictures of our citizens benefiting from those programs. Uh, but we don't necessarily widen the distribution of those successes. So I think that's something that we can work on. Um, just, uh, in general, and certainly under this economic vitality strategic goal.
And maybe getting like anecdotes from people that, you know, we actually allocate that assistance towards. Um, it, it will also help in, in advertising what y'all are doing too.
Okay. Uh, we can also come back to that comment because I believe council member Alyssa is, I'm heading in, in a, in a second. And there was another spot here under San Marcos as a destination, expand and support responsible tourism programs to promote local commerce. And it was a note.
That was mine.
Yeah.
Just a notation here, I don't, it's for us to know. I don't know if it's anything that we necessarily need to put in here. But we have talked about maybe five or six years ago, stop promoting the river as much, which we still are. And unfortunately, I think our desire to make the reuse at the river, make others aware of it, ended up reminding everybody, we've got a really pretty river that we need to protect. Um, and so I talk about unintended consequences. So one of the, and so I didn't know where to put that. So I thought this was a good one. So I'm just going to leave that out there. Council gave direction years ago. I mean, we don't want to tell people we don't have one. Uh, but it, but it's how we promote it and the water and um, things to do on the water. So I just wanted to maybe tee up that conversation again.
Mayor, uh, and for the public, Rodney Gonzalez, Assistant City Manager, thank you for that comment and I, I believe that we agree with you. Um, what we want to do is of course is be in alignment with you. And so when we do marketing, advertising, et cetera, we don't want to go against what council's desires are. But maybe staff can at least tell us what types of marketing they do. Um, and that would give us a good sense of the types of marketing, um, that, that we do. And I think that we'll continue to do.
Well, and if we're talking about economic development, I think we've all talked about people come. They probably brought all their, bought their groceries and stuff at home and packed it up. And they come in and, and they're part of the crowd at the river and then they leave. They're not bringing money into our community. They're not contributing to, to commerce. And so that's one of the things is we want people to come in and stay in our hotels and eat in our restaurants and shop in our stores. We want that, but the people that are coming in just for the river are coming in just for the river and they're not participating in that. And I think that's something that we need to make note of.
We are in alignment with that. Uh, the information that we have, uh, confirms that. That our day visitors from outside of our city do not contribute substantially to hotel occupancy tax nor to sales tax, uh, nor to eating at a restaurant. And so we wholeheartedly agree with you. I just want to make sure that as we do whatever marketing and advertising that we do during the year, that it's, it, which we'll continue to, it's not coming across as advertising the river.
Yeah. And, and we've made a lot of adjustments and a lot of changes. But still the, there's, there's, there's some attention out there that I think perhaps we could change.
Absolutely. And I know one of the comments that we had received, which was kind of spot on, the, um, the work that we did in terms of social media and, and, uh, advertising regarding ban the can, the single beverage container. We could have, we could have done that a little bit better. And so we acknowledged that.
I mean, when you look at it, it's telling people what they need to know. If you get further down, but when you just see the picture, oh yeah, San Marcos got a great place, river.
Yeah. And, and we wanted to, of course, you know, all of our marketing wants to be pleasantly attractive and, and things like that to the eye. And, uh, we didn't want to give that connotation of bring your cooler and your beverages over and have fun.
The idea was, you know, if you're coming, these are our new rules. But.
Yeah. Thank you. Rebecca, anything that you want to add to that?
Thank you, Rebecca Ibarra, Director of Destination Services. Um, we want, we have to find an avenue for responsible advertising or responsible marketing to make these individuals responsible when they do come here. So we will have to find a balance. Now, if the ads are, if you are seeing the ads and you're seeing the marketing, there, that is the local educational side of it. So when we are marketing advertising beyond, um, San Marcos is a responsible and we don't promote, we, we stopped promoting tubing, but we did, we do have other, other activities. And so we will try to find a balance. We will work with, with leadership to try to find that balance. But we do, we do need to be responsible and we do need to find a way to market, um, responsible advertise, uh, responsible individuals coming to our city and being responsible for their trash and whatever that may be. So we will work on that. Um, and we have a campaign now that we created just recently about litter and trash. And we do have that on our Facebook and our social media right now. It does not focus on the river. It's simply litter, responsible litter. Um, cause you know, even accidents are littering. So again, we will work on that and we'll just work with leadership and, and move forward with that.
We might want to look at some ads that were created when we were advertising the river more, that are still running. Texas music scene, um, that are very much promoting river. So that ad hasn't changed in a number of years. And I, I get if you have one that's successful, we don't want to pay to do a whole nother one. But it's, it's same one I've seen since I've been watching the program, I think. And that's been a number of years.
And, and if you see those, please let us know because we will make contact with, with them, um, so we can change that. But there's some out there that yes, we, we may not be aware of. So if you do see them, please let us know.
Thank you. Well, we're a co-sponsor of the program, so.
Yes, we were for many years.
Which is a good thing. No, it's still on there. Wow.
Are there running old ones?
They're running old ones.
I just want to take a temperament online, council members. Do you have any additional questions or responses? Okay. And I, good. All right. Um, we'll continue on. The, under that same goal, education and workforce development, I believe council member Amanda had a comment.
Yes. Um, sorry, I got ants in my pants. Um, okay. Outcome D, yes. Education and workforce development. Hayden, did I give you this one too? Okay. Uh, we were talking yesterday about the importance of, um, you know, working with our local school district. We're blessed to have, uh, both the school district as well as the university. And so, um, mine is in addition to continue establishing strategic partnerships with local schools and universities and the university to support community-driven workforce development. Aligning educational initiatives with the needs and values of the community. Is that doable?
Um, yes. And I can just quickly speak to that. Uh, but I, I think that is in direct alignment with the, the work we have been doing. And it adds even more emphasis to it. So I, I appreciate that. Um, you know, the workforce training and, and development efforts in our community are multifaceted. It's a very interesting ecosystem, right? So we have CJ Odom and his wonderful programs at, uh, uh, at the high school. Uh, you know, we're working with ACC to bring them in, uh, Texas State and their OWLS program. Uh, there, there's a lot of things happening and one of the things that we're looking at is really to expand our role. Uh, because you know, a lot of times when people are looking for that, our go-to resource has historically been a wonderful resource, which is, oh, send them to Diane Inslee over at the library, right? And, um, and so I, I just, again, just. And, and so I just, again, just want to give her tons of kudos because that's, you know, for so long has been our only resource, but that's being expanded. What I'd like to do is just take a brief moment to let Diane maybe speak to, you know, what we have done historically and then maybe also add Hayden to that as far as where we're going. Again, we, we're in direct alignment and not a lot of need to talk about this, but just wanted to just put a brief spotlight on them.
Thank you. Just to show how we have bridged that, I have been on the OWLS board for the past four years, so certainly input from the university that has happened. And my own children went to San Marcos School District and I have all, all the way K through 12. So I have a lot of contacts over at the school with our core four person. We have been able to bridge some of those kind of school to career type things by hosting. We did a, a career interest fair at the library and we also had teens there to participate and do some questionnaires about what they think would be next. So that's how we're trying to bridge with the younger kids. The school district does have access to a lot of career and technology that the general public here in San Marcos doesn't have. And so I think that's where we have put more of our efforts into the people who have already graduated school and then, or haven't graduated school and need to attend GED or ESL classes. So at the library, we have been working with Austin Community College and offering HVAC classes and accounting classes. We partner with Texas Workforce for their high demand careers, which does provide financing. We've had workshops on how people can access those funds to go for their career of choice. We have also had job fairs, so that benefits our business community and our job seekers. And then we've had smaller job fairs that are around kind of hard to hire positions. So we had one just for Gary Job Corp since they've had trouble hiring. We had an education fair so that we had childcare centers, Head Start, and the school district involved during the summer, trying to up the number of people that they have applying for positions. And then we had a para educator class. So that was a, a real need for teacher aides that are certified. And so we provided a free para educator class so that they would be qualified to take the jobs that we know we have openings for here in the community. The other thing is that the library is there 70 hours a week and anybody that walks in will get some amount of help. While it's true, we cannot sit with every person to fill every need they have on a walk-in basis, we do have programs where they will, can come in on a, on a scheduled basis or make an appointment so that they can work on their own job skills, resumes, cover letters, you know, whether they take GED classes or, you know, any of the other classes that we have. And then we've also been in line with some of these small business ideas. So how to read financial documents, how to find funding for your small business, what does it take to start a business, entrepreneurship classes in Spanish. And I think this year is really the year that we've made a lot of gains in providing instruction in Spanish. We do have GED classes in Spanish so they can get the GED in a job first and then learn English second, rather than spending the years it takes to learn English to be able to start GED classes. So put it in reverse so that it's more career oriented. And then we had classes on leadership skills, assertive conversation, and then some career exploration for people in Spanish. So the Think Big, the One Million Cups, the entrepreneurship networking, and then of course the HVAC and accounting. And I know Hayden has some ideas of where things will be going because we'll be able to expand that now that we've showed there is a need for technical classes. And the ones we've been able to offer are somewhat limited because we only offer free programs at the library. So people who might be willing to pay tuition and take classes aren't really able to do that. But under this new location, I think we'll be able to expand to people who are willing to pay to have some career training.
Wait, what new location?
At the city, at the city hall.
Oh, okay.
The city hall.
Hayden Miegel, Director of Administrative Services. Yes, going along with what Diane said, we saw how popular those HVAC classes are at the library and realized, look, there is a need out there for some type of workforce training space. We had originally identified a different site, so admittedly, this project has taken a little bit longer to get the courses started there, longer than I'd like. But we are, within the next one or two months, we anticipate starting to offer not only HVAC, but plumbing, mechanical and welding classes out of the city hall complex. And really talking with ACC, they said, well, we can start with one session, but if we have a whole lot of interest, we could always go to more because this is a space in our complex that isn't being used at any time during the day. We, city council did authorize spending some of our ARPA money to renovate it slightly. It really didn't take too much renovation, but we put in some additional lighting, some additional security since it is still a city facility. But we do anticipate that we should be having a ribbon cutting and a big announcement within the next couple of months. It could be a real game changer and we're excited for it.
One thing this, when we say ACC, it's really ACC Continuing Education, and that's a different entity. There is no in-district or out-of-district pricing. The price is the same for us to be able to offer these type of technical classes and they often have sales of classes where they offer the class at half price. And so we've been able to take advantage of that to get double the number through. So we do have data on the 45 graduates we've had from HVAC. They are all working in jobs. They have all brought their families out of poverty, which is why we have focused on that one career. There still is a need out there. We have HVAC businesses calling us. Our next graduation is February 27th and 14 out of 15 passed the big EPA exam. So, and, and I know people think this is all men, but there are women in the class that have gone on to this type of career. And one of the things with HVAC and some of these other programs is you can start at an entry level and through your own hard work and experience, move yourself up through the ranks. And so providing them now with leadership classes and entrepreneurship classes, we've encouraged them to then go on and maybe start their own business or to go on and just move up in the organization that they're in. So it's not just like, oh, here you are and this is ended.
Thank you. I mean, really the big reason I wanted to put this in writing is because yesterday, and I mean, I've been following the library for a while on social media and I just nerd out at how great y'all are doing, genuinely. And so I wanted an opportunity, number one, to plug y'all. And I'm glad you were, the public was able to hear everything that y'all are working on. And I'm proud of the work, genuinely. When we talk about safety, when we talk about investing in our people, this is how we do it. And so I really appreciate all of y'all's work and that's why I wanted to emphasize continue establishing because y'all have laid so much groundwork. And I just want the public to know, I want my colleagues to know that when we're making decisions, that this needs to remain a priority. And however we can continue all to, to help you, we understand that it's a, it helps our people too. So thank you both for all of the work, everybody at the library, everybody affiliated with it. Thank you from, from the bottom of my heart.
And just one last note on that is that I, I mentioned, you know, being an ecosystem, right? So many players in this arena. I would be remiss if we didn't also mention the great work that Gary Job Corp does out near the airport and also the work of the Hayes Caldwell Economic Development Partnership. Ted Grochsky does a lot of good work. The, I think it's the Education and Workforce Summit every year, brings a lot of us together to hear kind of where we're going. And certainly they work year round and that's something that we fund as well through, through that partnership. So just wanted to mention those two players.
And workforce solutions.
And workforce solutions, absolutely. Thank you.
Because that's where the state money gets, gets back into the community and there's options there for childcare and some other things. So they, they do great work and they do a lot of work in conjunction with ACC. Businesses will contact them, state the need, ACC may actually provide the instruction. Here's my question. Library is doing great and wonderful things and I knew about two-thirds of what you just said, so it's good to know what's, what more we're doing. How do we let the public know? Because most people are not going to presume that the library is doing that. So I don't know what the answer is, but we really need to let people know. But here's another question that I have. Every now and then people will talk about, gee, you know, y'all gonna put a satellite library in my neighborhood or something. I'm going, yeah, no. However, a lot of the wonderful work that you do, including helping people apply online, which is not always easy. I had asked years ago, it's when Mr. Lambres was here, not doing a satellite library, but could we take a bunch of laptops and go into the community, into some of the places that are kind enough to let us have meetings at the CAD store, Sinai Church, some other places, and say on the first Tuesday of the month, we will be there at a certain time or whatever frequency is determined that we need. I, I don't need to determine that. Have we given any thought to doing that or are we doing it and I just don't know it?
We do a lot of outreach, but we have found in our own computer classes, so we do offer weekly regular classes and then people can also make an appointment to come in, is that people are at such a vastly different skill level that having everybody sit down and learn the same thing at the same time.
When I meant computers, I meant to help people apply for jobs, not, not the computer class. I'm sorry, I wasn't clear.
Oh, okay. No, we have not, we have not really taken that out there with, with the free bus and we do have a bus stop and we're 15 minutes away from any neighborhood in the city. We have not thought about taking things out to a place where we might have to invest in hotspots in order to have enough wifi to operate that many laptops at a time.
Oh, that would be needed, yes.
And then it also would take a person and, and having the staff to do that. So we have spent more time on doing outreach to advertise what we do rather than taking that out to other locations. But it is, it is worth considering to see if there's especially a, a partner on the east side where it is a little bit further away from the library would be worth investigating whether that was something that could be offered at, at a church. There's just not much out there too that's a public space.
That's why I named the folks who kindly let us have city meetings there, which is the CAD store and the Sinai Church. And it was a, it was a job applications that I was really more geared at helping people because we're on a bus route, but not everybody out there has, as was noted yesterday, has easy access to a bus stop.
As more and more, as, as phones have higher and higher capabilities, people are able to apply with, through their phones. If they run into a glitch, they can always call the library and we'll talk them through what they're doing and, and can help them that way in their own home. So we have done that.
Okay, I don't think people know that though.
Well, we get a lot of calls every day with all kinds of weird questions. So I think sometimes people do think like, I can't make a move any further without getting some sort of technical assistance and, but you're right, not everybody would know that.
No, I'm glad a lot of people do, but I can tell you the vast majority of our community probably does not.
One thing we have tried to do is partner more with Texas Workforce to bring their programs into the library. The location of the Texas workforce is very difficult for people to get to. Even people with transportation will call us and say, I am here on Transportation Way and I do not see where Texas workforce is. And I have tried to compel them to put better signage at Posey just so people could find the location.
I have too.
And they have been very resistant to that. So it, it's been difficult, but we are working more with them and having our space more available to have Texas workforce come in and, and, and lead some of those programs that people can get to.
Thank you. All right. This is how it is written. Continue establishing partnerships with local schools, colleges and universities to support community-driven workforce development, aligning educational initiatives with the needs and values of the community. One more comment?
I, I just want to bring, that, that's great. I just want to bring up one more thing. Chamber of Commerce offered a tour of our high school and CTE, which I did. It was three-hour program a couple of days ago and it was wonderful. In case you're wondering about any one of the 21 programs that they offer where you can get license certification, be ready to go to work when you get out of high school. And that is for everyone, even those going to college. Their, their goal is that everybody should have something when they graduate. They've got the valedictorian signed up and I forget which course. But one of the things that was noted is that the average age of an electrician is now 53. And that people who are getting into that, hopefully there's some, at what they're being paid now, as we have fewer and fewer, that pay is going to end up coming close to double. What is that going to do to the cost of a house when your electricians and your plumbers are maybe making $20 more an hour than what was happening? That's going to increase the cost of construction. So the more people that we, we, workforce solutions, everybody can get trained in the trades, especially home building. They're not offering that in particular, but just something for all of us to be aware of. I heard years ago that the average age of a stonemason was like 58 and a welder was 50 something. And so that's going, we're, we need more people in what we used to call the trades. We're going to be looking at some really high-priced houses.
I want to make sure that I capture those who are online, the council members online, any, what questions or comments that you may have? Okay.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
The only other thing I would say is I, I think this is excellent and one way, at first when I heard values, I was thinking, okay, how are we going to measure that? But I think we can through our community surveys and things like that, you know, that we do every two years, we can find out a pulse of what the community thinks. The other thing is when we're meeting with, and I had shared this with council member Rodriguez when we met, is just that when we're meeting with companies that are like setting up shop in San Marcos and they're saying, how can we partner? What can we do? And one thing that we do really plug is getting involved with our schools, you know, because it was an engineering firm that we were talking with and I'm like, hey, you have people, you know, at the high school and stuff that want to be engineers. It's a great way to look at, you know, developing interns or helping them to get on a pathway that really does make these careers be something that they can endeavor and aspire to. So just, just know that those are also kind of informal channels that we work through. Whenever we have meet and greets with people, we, we do try to, to suggest that they partner with the school district and, and things like that as well.
I just, I want us to do everything we can to, to retain our people. So much of our workforce travels. We know that data shows a large part of like residents here travel outside. And I've said it before, not to belabor the point, but when they travel, they're not only taking their talents and skill sets, they're taking their tax dollars, whether it's gas, whether it's food at restaurants in, in adjacent cities. And so it's a loss all, all around. And so I just want our people to have, as somebody who went through, our school district went through, graduated from Texas State, I've been here through and through, like I want to do my part in assuring that, that we're giving people those opportunities and they know we're interested in giving them the skill set to keep them here.
And certainly we, we feel that. And it's not only a, a financial thing as far as them taking their, their, their tax money and their lunch money to other communities. It's really if we can create and maintain employment here through retaining our businesses, growing our existing businesses and bringing new businesses here, it's also a quality of life issue. You know, when you think about spending an hour in your car driving to up I-35 or down I-35, well, when you think about the parking fees, when you think about the time away from family and we then think about the retained income for our citizens, for our residents and for our community, that they can have more time and more money here if they had an equivalent job here in San Marcos.
And Lord knows the dangers that I-35 poses as somebody who travels or traveled for many years, an hour north and an hour back home, it's a very dangerous drive. And so the more people we can keep off of the highway and keep safe, the better. So yeah, definitely a quality of life issue. And so I'm glad to see my colleagues seem amenable to this and yeah, thank you.
From there, we can go ahead and begin the yes?
Thank you. Back when I was in high school, we had a program called Law Enforcement Explorers. And a few of those explorers went off, went on and became officers here in San Marcos. I thought a program like that really worked. Hopefully we can implement something like that again.
I will say uh on that, I always do caution. When it comes to, to our kids and sort of, as somebody, like I said, as somebody who went through the high school, the presence of officers was quite large. Um, and we know that when it comes to recruiting. Um, especially for law enforcement, especially for the military. The communities that are typically the ones that are subject to a lot of that recruitment, look like you and I. And so I just want to make sure that we are being very cautious when it comes to that. And we're expanding the opportunities that are available outside of, of those two very familiar career opportunities for our people, so.
Great. Thank you for those comments. Are we ready to vote on this now?
Yes, all right. So we'll start with Councilmember Mendoza, yes, so. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Good, all right. Councilmember Listen?
Just to, to carry on what we've been doing.
Mm-hmm, continuing, yeah, establishing.
Yeah, combine some of the things that, that we're doing. And I'm, I'm just hoping that the um, the, the fact that we're doing things in different places. Uh, will perhaps be part of one of the strategies that comes under that. Like use of our city facilities for ATC to do that. And I, 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 I would like, I, I hope we can see about making some of the library outreach physically into other parts of our community at times.
Is that enough clarity and detail? Yes, okay. Thank you. Is it a yes for you too? And I don't want to miss our council members online?
Yes, I'm absolutely, I'm very proud to continue to doing the work that we've been doing for several years now. My colleagues have been strong on encouraging that and absolutely keep our rattlers, bobcats, bears, and panthers in our town.
And Councilmember Lorenzo Gonzalez? And you're on mute.
Yes, I, I know, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I, I'm good with it. I'm good with the addition.
All right. All right, thank you. I just want to call our attention to time. It's about 9:54 right now. Do we want to take a break or do we want to continue to finish out this goal?
Finish that.
Sounds good. Okay, the next um post that we have is right here by education and workforce development. Facilitate opportunities for job training and educational programming through partnerships.
That was mine. We just did it.
We just did it. I thought so, wanted to make sure. And over here, we have a sticky, I think it's for, under strategies of outcome D. Work with community partners on outreach for job fairs and other employment opportunities. And there was second chance employment reentry.
I didn't flesh that one out in my little write-up, but um, I do want to name the importance of um. Acknowledging some of the more prevalent barriers for individuals that um. Are trying to go through the available workforce training opportunities. And I don't know how to wordsmith this, but I can like try later and come back. But it's basically um, like, yeah, like the programs that um Caldwell Lockhart has had with um. Supporting uh previously incarcerated females into getting into uh workforce training, um, stuff like that. But I, I don't have that fleshed out. I have other things after, beyond my posted, though.
Got it. And I don't want to lose a comment from Councilmember Mendoza.
So I actually had something to address this um under strategy. So it's under outcome D, but strategy three. When it talks about determining, determining uh how to invest to mitigate some of these barriers that we're talking about.
Uh-huh.
So in addition, my, my edit was to, at the end of that particular strategy three. Uh, just to explicitly say um, including as it relates to second chance hiring. So we're talking about barriers, we're talking about gaps and identifying those things. And this just explicitly says uh second chance hiring opportunities when we're talking about those things. So I don't know if that is sort of what my colleague was thinking, um, but that was an addition I had to that.
Yeah, um, which kind of complicates my, my, my thing I have fleshed out because I had a, an end of that sentence thing, but it's fine. Um, yeah, I think that, that is probably the most logical place to put it, but again, I haven't really fleshed that out. Um, I was just trying to think of where to put something, if there was energy for folks to um. Prioritize that because I think we've made such good strides and kind of the other things. And the, the only two uh opportunities is um, the second chance hiring. And then also um, putting in somewhere to identify uh opportunities for um childcare. But I also haven't fleshed that one out. And I think, I don't know if we have to have specificity for that. Um, because you know, workforce training had that program where it was like, they were like offering childcare thing. But apparently we never got any hits for it and it was like, why? Um, it's things like that. It's like, we know that that is a huge need. And it's like, how do we name the needs and then see what's available and why people aren't tapping into programs like that? But uh for this, that's perfect. The rest I'll, this has to come back to us for final, I'll, I'll figure something out then.
All right. So at this moment, um, any other comments or questions from either council member, mayor, or staff? I think we have one more comment looks like.
Well, I'm trying to see how, while we're here to optimize the time. Um, I mean, on that item. Uh, determine where to invest city funding to mitigate workforce training. Maybe in the middle of workforce training gaps and barriers, we can explicitly talk about um, something to do with childcare to mitigate.
Ms. Rex, I've talked about, yeah, childcare is, is huge.
A huge barrier, for sure.
Um, and I don't think we have it anywhere in here. And we've talked about it before at this meeting, but I'm not sure where it ended up.
Yeah, maybe we could just say including um, barriers related to childcare and second chance hiring opportunities. I don't know. Does that, does that work with people? And we can flush that out further, but I mean, that whole section specifically talks about gaps and barriers. And so we know that childcare fits that.
And, and what I understand on, on the childcare front, just from people that I know within the community, but also um some of our workforce who recently had children. It's not just about the cost of childcare, although that is one thing um that is very real. But the struggle is also just to find access to childcare. Because um, there's wait lists and there's so few facilities that now offer childcare. So um, as an example, that's one thing that I know um, we can talk about here. And it's going to be um relevant because Texas State has done some studies on it and they've asked us to partner with them on it. Um, and so they're looking at not just doing the child development model that they currently have, which tends to have fewer children because of what's all involved in a child development center versus a childcare facility. And so um, they're looking at being able to have bigger numbers and being able to work with us on that. So I know we will continue to work in that space and try to see where we can find things. I've also talked with the school district um, to see, hey, if there's something that we could work on together. Because I know y'all have trouble with your workforce finding access. We have trouble, you know, Hays County. So again, those conversations can be helpful in us trying to see how we can pool our resources together and try to um, at least start somewhere and then see how that can start trickling out uh broader.
And when we're talking about childcare, Texas Restaurant Association had a online workshop for elected officials. And not everybody works eight to five. There's weekends, there's evenings, and I know that's even a bigger challenge. But if we're talking about childcare, um, we might, we might as well talk about all of it if we could.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, so you know this, my best friend is what you're. And I mean, I, I have many friends who have children. I mean, my own mother was a single mother. And oftentimes uh parents feel as if they have to change their goals and aspirations to better take care of their children. And I respect that decision, but also I don't want uh parents to feel that there are no alternatives and that their life has to be put on pause for that just because there's not care. And so I appreciate my colleague bringing that up. And I hope that by explicitly codifying this in our uh strategic plan, that it can show people that this is uh something that we're really interested in addressing.
And the second chance hiring, as I mentioned yesterday, and I'll just repeat that, that's something we as a city also are looking at for our own pro, practices. To uh ban the box uh at, on the application about criminal history. So that they can go through the normal process that everybody goes through, go through the vetting. Criminal histories would still be conducted, but they'd be conducted once we establish who the most qualified applicants are through the process.
Think we have another comment?
Uh, and no, I mean, I just, I appreciate you interweaving that there. Um, I, again, I think we were making strides, but it, it, naming it, I hope will keep it as a like perpetual priority. Uh, I just recognize that a lot of times the staff, like they do want to go explore things like that. We amplify so many resources, like what, what are the, what are the reasons why some of the available programming? Or, I mean, at least for childcare and all that isn't working, but maybe if we write it down, it'll give them um. Like I guess permission to prioritize that. And because we throw so much at you all throughout the, the year. And it's like, well, we have to do everything on a strategic plan first. Um, so yeah, I appreciate that. I think it, it fits there. Yeah.
I don't want to miss any other comments online from our council members or questions? All right. All right. So as written, it says, determine where to invest city funding to mitigate workforce training gaps and barriers related to childcare and second chance hiring that have been identified, including industry training and certification opportunities. We can begin online with Councilmember Mendoza. Okay. Do we still have Councilmember Lorenzo Gonzalez? If he's dropped.
I think we can still work on the wording.
Okay.
But I'm good with it.
All right. Thank you. Noted, noted. Right. Councilmember Garza?
Yeah, we're voting now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Alrighty. Okay, um, under outcome E of same goal, we had um strategize. This was under responsible growth, diversify and deliberately explain, expand for a prosperous economy.
Uh, what did I put on there?
Strategi, strategize.
Oh, I think this also had uh another part to it, but it's okay. Um, I have a more semi-fleshed out. I don't know if that's the place to go though, but. Um, so, arrangement, yeah, so um, I'll just like read what I have so far. Um, determine where to invest, oh, just kidding, that's the wrong one. Uh, develop economic development incentive guidelines that consider businesses, workplace conditions, and employment practices, including their history of employee me, employee satisfaction and commitment to positive working environments. The most recent, um, do you want me to like DM it to you? I don't know.
Yeah, um, because I was, yeah. Yes, Hayden, mm-hmm.
Um, I think what, I've brought this up on a couple of occasions and basically what I'm told is we can, oh, you got it. Okay, cool. Oh, it's already on there? Oh, perfect. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Labor for, ooh, labor for, okay, cool. Excellent. Yeah, it's just been, I've just been talking about it for three years. And I'm like, okay, every year you're like, put it on the strategic plan. There's no bites, but uh, okay, it's on there. Perfect. Yeah.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. Um, and this was.
I'm sorry.
All right. So as written, right? Where is it? Hayden C?
A policy.
Hey, I'm sorry. Okay, okay, I see that. All right. Implement, implement incentives adopted in the economic development policy. Is that it? No?
The one right below it.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
We did this. All right. Research additional methods by which our economic development policy addresses and categorizes labor force practices.
Yeah.
Focusing on how the company's receiving incentive plans to assess and prioritize the needs and well-being of its workers. That's the one.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to research it. I want us to develop the economic development incentive guidelines. Um, like I, I don't know. It's like, I did some, but, but I could be my hot take. I don't know. I think that they, we already know that these mechanisms exist. It's just um, for me, it's like, I, I'm at the point where I think we just need to name that we need to develop them. Like, I feel like it's, I don't want us to get stuck in the researching part of it all. Does that make sense? But that's just me.
Councilmember, I think that's a point well taken. Uh, Joe Pantani, Assistant City Manager. Um, we are talking about, you know, where the rubber meets the road is in our economic development policy. So uh, we are uh beyond just developing those methods and doing that additional research. Really, to affect those changes will require a change to our economic development policy. So we're, uh, as we bring that to you, then I believe it would be up to council to kind of direct us to do that. To the extent that you're satisfied with those recommendations. So we are, we're prepared to do that.
Yeah, awesome. And I appreciate um that you take like little notes every time we, we bring up different incentives and um kind of help us interweave that to uh actually changing the practices. So I, I think at, at this point, I trust that you have your little, your little notes, your, your perpetual notebook of all the stuff that we've brought up. So, okay, that's, that's really helpful to know. Um, but yeah, I think it, it aligns pretty well. Uh, this is workplace conditions. Again, focuses on how the company is receiving a sense of priorities. Yeah, I think needs and well-being of its workers covers the workplace conditions. Employment practices, receives, yeah. I, I named employment practices specifically because, well, I was reading that those are things that can be more easily interwoven into the guidelines. But it, it's fine, it being like high level, I think.
And I think it's a labor force. It's right there for it.
Yeah, okay.
Well, in a simple edit, there could be labor force and employment practices.
Right, yeah. Yes.
Would that get?
Yeah. Um, I'm sure uh when we get this back all cleaned up, uh, we'll have more word, better wordsmithing. So yeah, I appreciate it. I think I captured the vibe, yeah.
All right, we can go ahead and vote on this one. We can start um online. I'll start online with Councilmember Mendoza. Under C, we have, yeah, we have develop additional methods by which our economic development policy addresses and categorizes labor force and employment practices, focusing on how the company's receiving incentive plans to assess and prioritize the needs of well-being of its workers. Okay?
That's fine.
Thank you. Yes. Councilmember Listen? Okay, all right.
Me?
Yeah.
I appreciate you asking for the visionist, but yes.
Thank you. All right. And the last, I believe, on this one, this was under strategies. Actively participate in the recruitment and retention of businesses in San Marcos. Utilizing the economic development San Marcos EDSM board and city councils to vet potential incentives. I'll hand it over to you.
I looked at this probably for four days, talked to Joe to try to come up with some language and put my ideas into paper. Um, I don't have anything to bring forward because I was trying to sit here. I, I, I see the um, letter A, subsection A. Um, and I, I do, I'm looking forward to learning more about what the economic development board does, um, for sure. I just, um, when we talk about responsible growth, diversifying and all those things, you know, that seems to be a, a key word that people really like. But when you ask, what do you mean by diversifying businesses? You don't really hear as much. Um, and I just want to make sure that, and again, I don't know how to, to put this into words yet. I, I tried. Um, but I just wanted something there to sort of let people know that when we're talking about responsible growth. We're also talking about doing so in a way that doesn't just sit here and attract large businesses for the sake of attracting. We're also talking about doing so in a way that doesn't just sit here and attract large businesses for the sake of attracting large businesses. That we're actually attracting businesses that have a record of taking care of their workers, have a record of, you know. Benefits and those things. And I know we talked about that earlier. I just don't know how to word that. And I. Again, I know that the, the reason we bring the Economic Development Board is because of the experience, because of all of those things, but. I just want to make sure that the people at the table are the people who would actually be benefiting from these jobs and, um. Can have a say so. And again, I don't know how to, and maybe I can come back on that.
Yeah, two points there. I think, uh, the first is that, um, you know, all of this lands back in our economic development policy. And, um, you know, there's kind of two things there that, um, apply. One is the scoring criteria, which we've already talked about. So I won't get into that, but that's essentially. That those twenty points address how they operate, but then it's who it is, right? And a lot of times these incentives are on an application basis. So who is looking at us wanting to come here? What we're hoping to do with the new position with business retention is also to make sure that our existing local and small businesses. Medium businesses, if you're a business in San Marcos, we want to make sure, and we'll have a staff member now dedicated. Uh, to allowing those businesses and, and helping them and educating them to understand. The benefits that are available and the incentives available from their San Marcos local government. All of the incentives we've talked about, making sure that they are applying, right? It's not just the people that are looking at us from, uh, out of town. It's. Hey, you want to expand here? Please apply for an incentive. And because, you know, when we talk about diversifying, the number one thing is let's keep our existing businesses. And that the foundation that provides, you know, the, the foundation for our economy. And so that, that's where we want to start. And then it's those targeted industries, you know, our, the economic development partnership goes out and we can help them target the types we want. And that certainly, we love that feedback from council. That's a, that's a conversation. And then I see our city manager that wants to add to that.
Yeah, I think this, this, um, and maybe it's, it's worth clarifying because. I don't think that this bullet was intended to be diversify in the way that we think of diversity. It's really in the sense of, um, making sure that we're choosing businesses. That are different than retail or sales tax dependent companies. So companies that may, um, help us to have more, more stability, consistency. And less of the volatility that you see within the market like you do within the retail sector. So I think that that might be worth, because we're having the conversation, it's bringing up, and I understand that has a word. That's a word that's emotive and it brings up certain feelings, but it's not necessarily the way that it's intended here. So maybe we need to use a different, a different thing. But it's really meant to the types of businesses.
And I just, uh, how do I do it without, like, I talked to Joe, uh, Amazon, you know? It's like making our economy reliable on something like Amazon scares me. It really does. It scares me. Uh, not only because of their notorious labor practices. Uh, I know probably most people in this room and most people who are aware probably wouldn't take a job at Amazon. There's other opportunities that they would deem more viable, more safe, more, um, all of those things. And so. Uh, again, it's like, how do we, yes, attract those industries, but also when we attract those industries, are they looking at the world in a long term? Way. And like you said, uh, not just selling things. Are they focusing on like? Industries related to the climate without greenwashing. Are they focusing on things that where people can come and get those jobs? And build on their careers. Um, and I don't know, again, I don't know how to word that and I can speak with y'all more on that. Because obviously, you know, we can only do so much. We can't force people to come do business here. But I just wanted to be so explicitly clear. In our plan, um, that when we talk about being open for business. We're not just sitting here and saying, oh, we'll take anybody just for the sake of saying we did something. No, we strategically planned on making these opportunities. Good for our people long term. Um, and for me, I don't see Amazon and things like that being like that because that's such a volatile. Market. I mean, the monopoly that they have could one day just vanish. And then what happens to our local economy? That has put an over reliance on sales tax, that sales tax that's accrued from that. And so I just, I think long term. Um, and making sure that we're bringing industries who are also thinking long term as well.
And I think that gets right back to the point that City Manager Ray has brought up is that, that is exactly what that diversify word means. Is making sure that we spread out our business portfolio in a way that one business isn't driving it. I mean, we've seen with our local sales tax that if one company has a bad year. That it has a major impact on our budget. Now, I worked in a previous community because I, before I took this job, I, I looked at some of the information. Do I want to come to San Marcos? My previous community that I worked in had its property tax base as forty-four percent of its budget, twenty-seven percent from sales tax. When I looked at San Marcos budget at the time, it was ironic. It was exactly the opposite. Forty-four percent from sales tax and only twenty-four, twenty-seven from property tax. And that's why, you know, the city manager and, and with, um, uh, director, uh, finance director, Mr. Locke. Really speaks to making sure that we understand that there's a role for us to play in expanding our property tax base. Not being so reliant on sales tax and if, you know, whether it's COVID or any other thing that happens that depresses some of those companies. That all of a sudden we are looking at reducing major services for our community. So again, that gets to that in terms of the word diversify. And then, uh, your other comment about company values. Remember, this is your economic development policy. You have a scoring mechanism, but at the end of the day, those incentives wind up in a council meeting for your consideration. And it's a policy decision. Staff's role is to take any application that comes in, score it. Provide the data that you need to make that decision. But when those core values, those personal values, the, the workforce values come in. Those are policy decisions that this council is really, um, you know, the sole and last. Uh, commenter on, and you approve that incentive or not. Now, if the incentive is approved, then it's something that at least four of you support. If it's denied, the, there's no incentive. Doesn't mean the company still won't come here because the company can, you know, come here, buy land and build. Without an incentive, but certainly at the end of the day, y'all have a last say as a policy decision.
And, and that's, you know, when I hear, so there's the bullet that talks about the labor practices that y'all, that y'all provided direction on earlier. And so I feel like that talks to what you're saying in terms of the types of companies and the workforce that you're trying to do. As far as this, this is really trying to look at the stability for the tax base, you know, so that we're not having. And this was really because we used to have the outlet balls that comprised such a huge portion of our sales tax. And so this is an outgrowth of that, but then also when I hear, you know, councils talk about property tax relief. I mean, that's how you truly get property tax relief, right? Is you have more people who can pay into the system. Because that will help to provide more resources for what we need to feel, you know, to be able to, so, to service our growing community. So that, that's really what this is intended to be in terms of the types of industries that we want, the types of, um. Of base that we want them to bring in terms of revenue to our economy versus the labor practices that were talked about before. If that helps to clarify the intent of this one. And, and so just because we're having the conversation, that tells me it probably needs a little more clarity. And we can definitely try to see how we get that to come across better.
Yeah, and those are, uh, I think, you know, we can definitely continue this conversation. I'm sorry I didn't have like language. I tried. I like four days sitting at this. Um, but if, I mean, if we're going to be addressing our economic development policy, uh, soon. Um, that seems like a good place to kind of nail these, these thoughts down. And so unless my colleagues have, uh, some. Language off the top of their head.
I don't, I don't have a language, but I, I do want to echo your sentiments. This is something I've been expressing. Since I got elected and, um, Joe said, you know, you, you give us the data that we need to make the decisions. And then like we, we see every incentive that comes our way. And, and I, I get that, but. I think of the Amazon situation, for example, and I do think when presented data that y'all. Gave them, which was good data, um, my, you know, the past councils made those decisions based on that. But it's like, how do we, how do we? Assess these other things that sometimes is actually not really in the Amazon case, less obviously quantifiable? Because I think, I mean, I would hope that if. Our colleagues, I, I guess the folks in the past council who approved that could hop in a time machine after just spending maybe. Like. A day in the parking lot of Amazon talking to its workers and they could hop in a time machine to see. How they would have moved differently when considering like that type of incentives. I think it'd be different, but I don't know how, how to do that. Because the last time I checked, the numbers seem really good. Like we're hitting the marks like, um, in terms of. We're going to hire this amount of people by this time and it keeps increasing and all of that, but. People don't last long there. Like, I mean, I've had, and I've said this in past visioning, like I've known people who have gone on suicide watch. Because of how terribly let down they were by that experience and, you know, being sold this, oh, this is the. One of the, one of a handful of job opportunities you can work at night and, you know, this is, this is all you've got, like. Like they're traumatized, right? But it's like, how do, I, I mean, if they would, if I would have had to vote for it, I would have named that. I just don't know. I don't know what type of information y'all could vet so that people could understand those realities. I mean, it kind of seems pretty common to me. Like, did y'all not have Google back then?
Well, and, and I just want to make sure that council is aware, and this is something that we actually wrote into. The contract with Hays Caldwell Economic Development Partnership, who is kind of our front door. For these incentive applications, that the applications go to them first and, and, and then come to us. Is that for large companies like the one we've been talking about. In the, in the contract with the partnership, we have the opportunity for them to get. A report that covers this, right? The, you know, the, the, the environment, the worker environment, the, the ethics. It's, you know, a governance report. So we have the ability to, to get a special report like that. Um, and for, I believe it's large companies within, um, I believe it's defined by the number of employees. Remember, if it's two hundred or three hundred, I'll have to look at their contract. Uh, what I can do is send an email to council that speaks to that. Uh, because that is additional data. It's over and above what we would typically do for any other incentive for a smaller company. And I, I think that will speak directly to that. And, and, you know, once you get that email, you know, give us some feedback, but certainly. I think it does speak to that, that data gap that sometimes we do have. Uh, because a lot of times, you know, and this actually came up during the discussion of an incentive for a company. Uh, that, you know, really it's like, well, what about the glass door reviews, right? And, and, you know, the worker issues and comments that have been provided. And how, how does staff bring that to bear and, and provide that? Is that data? You know, a lot of it's anecdotal, but certainly it's, it's that trend, right?
I have a related tangent, if I might, just to, um. A related, no, my tangent is related. I don't like tangents, but, um, to something that Mr. Pantalian said, sorry, Amanda Hernandez, Director, Planning and Development Services. Uh, Mr. Pantalian mentioned earlier that some businesses can come in and not ask for an incentive, and Amazon is actually a great example of that. The first Amazon came in, went through the whole process. The second Amazon came to us because they were so impressed with our development process. So that one had no incentives associated with it. They just knew that we could get them through all the processes in the number of months. That they needed to open their, their business. So you might not always see them come to the table if the land is ready and entitled.
Oh, no, that's fine, but I'm just saying if we're going to be giving them something, like let's make them do some work. But also for legal, political purposes and because I'm a conspiracy theorist, everything that I mentioned about Amazon is my opinion and my opinion only and, um. Don't come for me, uh, Amazon.
There's a comment.
They can come for me and try to sue me. There's no assets. I ain't got no assets. So I'll say what I want to say. Um, no, it's just like, the reason I brought that up was not to open up any deep wounds or anything like that. It was more so, there have been studies to show that companies like Amazon, but Amazon in particular, there was a, I want to say there was a ProPublica study. Um, when they select where to put these facilities, almost always, they look like our communities. They look like me, you know? And so. When you have, I would hope that they were not taking necessarily incentives because they're a multi-billion dollar company. I mean, so, you know, it's just. I know like the anecdotes and how do you substantiate that and how do you factor that into your decision? But, you know, those anecdotes are there for a reason. Somebody was brave enough to say, hey, I hated this experience. I hated this experience. And so I just, I don't want us to be, like I said earlier. I just don't want us to be saying that we're open for business for the sake of opening, and I had this conversation with the chamber. Many people in this city want to feel the actual effects of this trickle down economy that's supposed to exist. And they're not feeling that. And so, um, I'll, I'll, I'll work with y'all on the policy. And kind of seeing how we can better implement sort of what my, my colleague and I are discussing and we'll be in touch about that stuff.
Thank you. Any other further comments? I think we have one from Mayor.
We did add, and I'm, I'm not saying it was enough, um, but we did add a number of things, Mr. Pantalian. I don't recall all of them, but there was some, a closer look at companies before we did the incentive. When we updated that policy a couple of years ago. So we have, we, we have recognized that and we have done some, like I said. I'm not opposing what you're saying or saying that what we did was enough, but we had a good run and start.
Thank you. Alright, I do want to go back to, um, one that we sort of put on aside. Until, um, council member Alyssa Garza was in the room, and this was under outcome B. I believe with business community actively support and attract diversified business activity, including local and emerging. Small businesses to thrive and expand in our community. And do you remember this comment? Here you go.
I think this is similar to, um, past comments that I've had. It's just like, is there a way to interweave some language that forces us to? Have some kind of, um, measures to reflect on the impact of these things. So. Yeah, specifically number two, I saw like all these initiatives that we did, largely funded by ARPA money. And when I asked, like, what's the progress, what's the reports? I, I saw reports on like how they are. Like the very basic, like this is what we're doing. We're doing it pinky promise. We've met this goal by X percent. But, uh, my perception from just like engaging with neighbors. Is that a lot of those programmings, like it's the same people that show up? Um, or the content that is, uh, that we're funding in terms of like technical support and all that? Like it's, it's just not meeting the actual needs of small businesses and. I think like the minority business stabilization grant is a good example of. How when we like listen to our neighbors, what they want, like they'll use the resource. Like I think it, it was. A lot of folks applied and got it. They told. Of, a few of us, uh, during the pandemic that, no, they don't need training for QuickBooks. Like what they need to survive the pandemic is money, right? And so I don't know how to interweave that to just make it like, okay, any type of. The assistance that we give or even support through other partnerships like Splash or the, um, GSMP or the Chamber, like. How are we measuring the impact of our investment more intentionally beyond like, this is what you said you were going to do and you kind of did it. But we're just trusting your pinky promise.
Joe Pantalian, Assistant City Manager, and I, um, I appreciate that, that the focus on reporting so that what gets measured gets done. And if it falls short, you know it and, and you can act upon it. So I, I appreciate that. I want to address even something you mentioned earlier, which is really a matter of, are we getting the, the benefits, the services to the people they need the most? And I think we've really benefited from the work of, uh, Ms. Pettis Carey. Uh, Grissel has just. Uh, Gressel has just done a tremendous job with Christian Smith on the Minority Business Stabilization Grants. And that was a real learning experience for us because it really forced us to try to meet people where they are at. Uh, we're hiring a, a new business retention person who will work in this space and hopefully we'll have more resources, not only to focus on working better to, to get to the people, but also to expand and even implement some of our uh, current policies and business or programs that are in place in the economic development policy, so uh, we will look really hard and, and, um, if, you know, incorporate here the reporting aspect of it, because I think we can do a much better job of providing not only the council, but our community with feedback on these success and benefits, uh, that are being provided. Uh, so that, you know, if it's, if it meets your expectations, fine, if it doesn't, then we either need more resources or we need, need to do a better job.
Right, and I appreciate you letting me know that you guys are working on that. I think the Minority Business Stabilization Grant is also a good example of how I assume that y'all are picking up what I'm putting down, so like, and I, and I'll just name this, like, I think that was one of those things where it was like my initial conversation was with the past city management, and then I, I thought, I, I thought it was understood, you know, the, what the community really needs with that fund, and I thought I had made it clear, um, when we all voted on it, but then the initial um, proposal for that use of money was totally different than what I imagined, which was like just money, like, you know, the, just because they're like our small local businesses doesn't mean they're like, uh, like they, they're competent, they, they know what to do, they don't need QuickBooks, but I think that was a, a good process and I'm sharing this just so that, because we had internal conversations, we didn't really like share it with other folks, um, for the need of not just the data on, or assessing how we that the investments are made, but even information given to us as to what the needs are. Because had I not looked at the proposal and been like, what? Like, I think all the council would have been presented as, this is the proposal and it sounds good on paper, but it, in my opinion, wasn't gonna meet the needs. But I will say that I appreciate y'all's willingness to even entertain that conversation. And after that, I feel like there was a lot of really good progress and I've heard good feedback from the applicants, but it's like, how, how do we create a system and name the importance of those things in that so that it's not isolated to when a council member goes on a tangent and calls Stephanie crying, um, right? Like, how do we, does that make sense, like?
There's that word tangent again.
Oh, no, but I like it, I'm a tangent girly, I'm sorry, I have no intention.
Well, and, and I, I do want, you mentioned something about, you know, this administration, I think this is something that I and all of us, I think, enjoy is having City Manager Reyes create those opportunities for conversation with council. Uh, to get feedback on, uh, not only what we've done, but where we're going. And, uh, for you to give us that feedback on course corrections or really reestablishing some expectations that we may be either, uh, misinterpreted, um, or, or, or just not hitting the mark. Uh, those work sessions are invaluable, the memos that we send to you and the feedback we get, uh, it really helps us, uh, to ensure that we are hitting the mark.
I guess I'll just say, I don't have verbiage, I'll try to figure something out, um, I'm, mm, I have to leave here in a little bit, so but I, I think there's the, the energy is like you guys are already doing it, I just I just think that it's important to name that so that we're all on the same page, that that's a priority, um. Yeah, that's all I got.
I think there's another comment.
So Joe mentioned cour- course corrections, and I have a couple of examples for both of those contracts, actually. With BCL, you know, we started pressing them, okay, we need the reports, how many engagement hours are you having, and we're getting those now. But they've also kind of pivoted to where, and it's something that we just amended their contract to provide bridge loans. And really utilize that with some of the economic development funding that council has already set aside that we can make that go farther and really help some of those businesses who might not have the resources right now. They identified that as an area that they could really assist. Another one, um, the contract with Riparius Foundation. They're sup- supposed to provide grant assistance for startup and small businesses, minority-owned businesses. We are also wrapping up the partnership with Texas State. At that time, looking at our nonprofit organizations, we realized, wait a second, why don't we also include nonprofit organizations in that Riparius contract? So they started providing those grant writing courses. And we heard from quite a few participants that it was really useful to them, so we do look for those areas where we, where there is synergy, hate to use that word, but where there is synergy, and look for those opportunities that are already out there to see if we can match up what we are, what we're already doing.
Need to make a correction, it was not in the economic development policy that we said we're gonna take a closer look, it was in the GSMP contract. That's where it was, so I just wanted to make that correction. And yes, thanks for mentioning the, the BCL, because for the, um, the, the smallest loan program, back to the oning grant thing, I kept wondering why nobody was using it, or very few. And the Downtown Association President said, those are reimbursement, and the small businesses can't afford to do the upfront. And I said, and so I would start talking to some bankers, and they said, that's a loan that we're probably not gonna do because it's an improvement, there's nothing to repossess, to be quite specific about it, on a rented building. Um, and so, the, I happened to uh, for one of the CapCO committees that I'm on, they happened to have the, the founder of BCL came in and spoke and talked about, they started out by doing the little loans. And I think the small business consulting probably came about to make sure that people could be successful and pay those loans. So that's when we, and I went, wait a minute, when I'm, again, talking to the Downtown Association President, we've got them under contract, so just, you know, putting some pieces together. And I, I'm, I, I hope that that's making it much easier for the, the, the little guys to come in, take advantage of those things.
And, and I, I really want to commend, um, everybody's hard work on that. You know, when council puts forward something, we really do strive to meet your expectations, and so that's why a lot of times we do ask for that feedback to make sure, hey, if this is, if this is something that's a newer thing, we really want to know, is it meeting your expectations so that we, we get a win for y'all, we get a win for us? I mean, just like this whole thing, you know, is is important for us to be on the same page. The thing that I, that I will say, um, is that what we will try to do, um, council member got aside not having, uh, you know, I know with the language and everything, we can talk about some of the things that we are working on as even part of what we put forward in our strategies. Um, so that hopefully we can name some of those things to capture some of that. So, um, we can, we can take that on our end in terms of putting that forward to y'all when we bring back the strategic plan.
Cool, um, I appreciate that, and I, I do, I will say, I appreciate y'all's being receptive and I, sometimes I feel it's like I hyper-focus on certain projects, but to me, it's like I, I don't have the capacity to like look through all of them, so that when I do get the information, I give it towards y'all. But I will say I appreciate y'all devoting, um, he said? Yeah, I always want to change your name in my head, like, but, uh, and Hayden to that. Um, I just think it's important to name that here because I do get, I do get whenever I'm like what can't you guys like figure out like what's going on and then like do your projects off that, and you're like, we literally have no time? Um, and so, yeah, but I appreciate you guys have found the capacity, I don't know where Hayden's finding it, under the bed, between the cushions, like he's, he's pulling it out of somewhere to do all that, um. So I appreciate that, thanks for the idea. Think, just putting it in there will help in case you win the lottery and decide to peace out, and you're like, we have new leadership, it's like, well, it was in the strategic plan, okay, you guys, so we have to do this. It's not just because Stephanie's a better leader, like, uh, yeah.
All right, so we have a modification here of clarifying language that we're adding to, to assist emerging and existing small businesses, including non-traditional, through grant assistance and technical support, and clarifying that language. Um, do we want to begin here with that? Mayor, thank you. Um, Councilmember Alyssa, yes? Yes, three, and I don't want to miss her, um, council members online, got a thumbs up from Councilmember Mendoza and a thumbs up from Councilmember Lorenzo Gonzalez. All right, thank you all so much for that. That brings us at ten forty-one, so we'll take a ten-minute break from here. And then when we come back, we will start with Public Safety Core Services and Fiscal Excellence and that, with that goal statement. Thank you so much. So, the goal that we're going to be looking at, um, falls under, again, Public Safety Core Services and Fiscal Excellence. Here's the goal statement, deliver quality government services and improve community safety in a fiscally responsible manner with a professional workforce. We will begin with the comment or tag on a post-it, leverage future development to benefit the city. I'm not sure who wrote this. Okay, so underneath here, community safety, collaborate to prioritize and enhance public safety services while building resiliency and trust within our community. Right here in this bridge, we have a couple of notes here. Addressing residents' basic needs in effort to reduce crime. Address root causes of the crime. And then we also had a comment from Councilmember Amanda as well. Uh, who would like to begin discussion around that or comments?
Which one are we, I'm sorry?
Under community safety, collaborate to prioritize and enhance public safety services while building res- resiliency and trust within our community, and then under here, it was address root causes of crimes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did, I wrote that. I read it, but I have something, but you can, no, go ahead, you go. No, I mean, I don't care.
I, I mean, I can go, I have it, uh, but if it doesn't touch, we can, uh, collaborate. Um, so my addition was under outcome A. Um, and it was to, and I'm, I'm still trying to flush this out, but uh, to partner, I know we're talking about what is the role of the city and to what end, um, but partner with residents and key stakeholders to create and establish a holistic approach to achieving safety. Focused on proactive, non-punitive solutions and c- community-driven initiatives. Um, and if I may explain what I mean by that, I know this tends to be an area that I put a lot of attention to, but as I spoke with City Manager Reyes, there is no expenditure that we have as large as our public safety expenditure. And so I feel to be good stewards of our money is to, to be aware of the fact that, not to discount the work being done. Um, but it is, however you feel about policing and those things, if you care about what we, us being good financial stewards, um, doing the same thing over, o- over and over again and expecting different results will never work. And so when I talk about looking at a holistic approach to achieving safety, um, my colleagues have sort of hinted on, there are alternatives, we just heard, um, from Ms. Diane about all of the things that the library's doing, that's actually achieving safety. Whether people want to agree with that or not, it is, and so this is just asking that when we're talking about what safety looks like, the city is not jumping in to, to interject and say, hey, this is what we believe safety to look like, and this is the sole solution. Um, this right here would actually have us, whether it's Gressel or whomever, to sit there and, and talk with people who are doing the work around public safety, who are doing the work around reimagining what that looks like, um, and making sure that when we're talking about achieving this, we're doing so in a proactive way, not a rea- not solely a reactionary way. Um, that saves money, it keeps people out of our jails, it keeps people from having really traumatic, uh, interactions, um, that later affect them down the line, and so this is just us explicitly saying that we're going to do those things, focus on figuring out what those are. Um, so that we can sit there and let our community know that we're not putting all of our eggs into one basket, so.
Thank you. Comments from that?
No, I mean, we, we did talk about this and, um, I appreciate the understanding of, of that. It's just that it is more about, you know, providing, it goes back to our sociology, psychology classes of, of, of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And just providing those basic things because that also represents safety to people. And so I appreciate, um, Councilmember Little Rodriguez and talking with me about, about her thoughts on that. Um, one of the other things that she mentioned, and I don't remember if you're gonna add it as another thing, so I don't want to steal the thunder office that you had mentioned.
Yes, so other cities, and granted, um, I need to do my research at finding cities that are similar to like our population and sort of what we're working with. But other cities have actually done pretty, uh, cool approaches to this, and some have established, uh, what's called an Office of Violence Prevention. Um, I think Dallas, maybe Lonzo, you can talk on that, I think Dallas was, may have been one of those cities that decided, you know, hey, we're gonna take a different look at this.
Dallas and all its amazing federal funding, yes.
Yeah, and granted, though, again, I want to preface all this with saying, looking at cities like Austin and Dallas, I always do caution because they're not necessarily reflective of the same, same level of funding and those things. Um, but it's, I bring it up to say, other cities are, are looking at, hey, what can we do different? Um, that doesn't just involve, like I said yesterday, uh, police, it's not police-centric. And, uh, a lot of these offices deal with things like domestic violence, helping people identify what that looks like. Uh, we were talking yesterday about the importance of giving services to our juveniles. Um, they look at things like that too and really want to address what do people need? Um, and so, uh, I don't know if that explicitly is I know we were talking about, I don't know if that's a good, this is a good place, but I had previously that we, uh, I don't, I got rid of it for some reason, but that we establish or work to establish uh, the creation of a, a Office of Violence Prevention. So, that was what we, does that capture what we?
Yes, that, that's what we talked about, was like maybe, um, doing some preliminary work to understand a little bit more about what all goes into an Office of Violence Prevention, but then also, you know, what would it take to establish something of that nature? Um, so that's something that we could definitely, if you wanted to capture somehow there, whether it's on the strategies or whether it's something else, just to be able to look at what all it would take with that, we may not be able to fund it this year, but again, it's getting us to start looking at it. What are the components that go into it? What's the staffing that goes along with that? What are the models that go along with it? You know, those kinds of things, we can absolutely, um, start, start working towards that end.
So I have the thing I deleted, uh, I just found it. Um, so what I had previously related to that was partner with residents and key stakeholders to design and establish a dedicated Office of Violence Prevention, focused on proactive solutions and community-driven initiatives.
Lonzo Anderson, Assistant City Manager, in twenty twenty, uh, in the city of Dallas, my past life, uh, the City Manager's Office created an Office of Integrated Public Safety Solutions. Um, and basically it was created in the spirit of real change. And its solely job was to address systematic factors that contribute to criminal And its solely job was to address systematic factors that contribute to criminal activity. And so by providing law enforcement with non law enforcement solutions that improve and reduce demand on police services. And so up under that office, we had our rapid response teams. Those are the teams that go in the field and actually provide service to individuals that may be in a mental health crisis. That was a partnership not only with the Police Department, but the Fire Department, but also with mental health clinicians. Another work group that was up under that office was Mental Health Response Team. Their sole job was not in the field, but it was identifying those individuals that was in the community that are chronic callers and giving them specialized and very detailed time. Also, we had a violence interrupters. Those were nonprofits that we worked with that worked in high risk areas that had a promise of violent crime and working to uncover the root cause of the crime that is happening, but also reduced detention in those neighborhoods. And also a very important study that was done in Philadelphia, believe in 2017, 2018, we looked at blight and how does blight contribute to criminal activity? And what can the city do to overcome that as well too? So there was a number of different factors that was associated with that. I understand that one size doesn't fit all, but there's a number of different cities across the nation that have these independent offices that are providing non law enforcement solutions, but at the same time, it's improving the quality of life in their city.
Can I add something to that? You mentioned a lot of things and I'm writing them down. So just for context, especially for Lorenzo as well, Amanda already knows this, but so I guess, I guess I'll begin by saying, almost every visioning and budgeting conversation I've brought up, like in particular, when we were talking a lot about those statistics about the violent crime and addressing the violent crime, community led violence prevention interventions, non punitive approaches. Dallas was one that I had my eye on. And then Austin, obviously what Amanda said, like kind of different economic realities there. But it never had a consensus from the body to like name it and things. But there was a commitment by the staff, like there was energy for them to be exploring those things. Aside from like my one on ones and conversations with city leadership, I don't think we've been given kind of like formal overview of those things. But I will say that I have seen the energy begin, like it's resulted in action. So some of the things that ACM Anderson talked about, we are actively talking about in like the Mental Health Coordinating Committee, which Chief is on, like the emergency, what is it? For the 911 calls and all that, everything you just said, basically like. So I don't know if Chief or anybody else has some like hot takes on how we're already addressing those things, but also to highlight the importance of adding it to the strategic plan because we are seeing that some of the things that are being done, it's gaining energy and momentum. So we might as well put it down with our vision of how it should proceed moving forward. Does that make sense?
So Stan Sanders, Police Chief, to speak specifically to what the Councilwoman is asking about, relates to the mental health initiatives. And so you and I serve on the Mental Health Coordinating Committee. It is a countywide system in which we're bringing stakeholders together to address mental health services and trying to raise the bar for everybody. Part of that that is specific to the Police Department and Public Safety is we have now added telecrisis services at time of 911. So there's some fancy language out there that talks about a sequential intercept model and law enforcement is at intercept one. So at the time of 911 call, that's when we get involved. Ideally, we don't want law enforcement involved and law enforcement doesn't want to be involved. So what we have done is we have partnered with our local mental health authority and the mental health crisis line so that when a call comes into the 911 center, if the person is not armed with a weapon and have not already committed a criminal offense, then we can pass that phone call off to the crisis line and allow them to triage that from a mental health perspective, and it takes us out of the equation. Another thing that we've done is we have embedded a mental health clinician with the mental health unit. And I have great news to report, our local mental health authority, which is Hill Country, has now applied for a grant to also add a community paramedic to our team. So we would have scene stability, we would have mental health services through a qualified mental health professional, and then we would have community paramedicine. I don't think that's going to be in partnership with the Fire Department. So Chief, I'm not trying to steal your employees, but we could pay for a paramedic through their grant funds, which is administered through the Health and Human Services Commission. So that's what Councilwoman Garza is referring to, some really good initiatives. The question was, when will we know about the grant? I'm assuming that we will probably know by October 1.
Um, sorry, I'm dealing with the family loss.
And I'll check with online for our Councilmember Lorenzo. Gonzalez, do you have any comments or questions regarding? Because this may feed into the comment that you had around this area. I believe this was your comment possibly, addressing resident basic needs in effort to reduce crime as well.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it is kind of feeding into it, but I had a question for Chief. So just out of curiosity, when you mentioned that when you get a mental health call or 911 operators or call takers get a mental health call and they haven't committed a crime and they're not armed with a weapon, it gets transferred. Is that like basically to like 988 as opposed to 911?
It's not the same number as the 988. The 988 is the suicide hotline in which the state of Texas recently funded, and it's fully operational. There's a mental health crisis line that we are actually using. And so it's the exact same type of a program, Councilman.
Okay. I was just wondering.
Yeah. The reason why I asked, I shared that context and asked you to name some of those things is I, I believe that there's energy to be more intentional about the way that we are conceptualizing safety. And I think in practice, we're doing that. But I do think it would be powerful to name that here, so I'm vibing with that. Because that'll also help us be able to make those connections every time we contemplate human services funding, you know, mental health programs and stuff like that, like make that explicit connection that it is, it does contribute to safety and not just help people feel safe, but there's, you know, there is relationships between having what you need to survive and whether or not, like with crime rates, right? I mean, I feel like people know that. But yeah, and efforts like this will just complement what the investments that we have made and committed to making on the police side. So I think this is like the natural progression. I sent Hayden some, some language, and I think there's a lot of overlap, but I'm trying to figure out a way to merge some ideas to, so that it hits, but I'm having a hard time, but that's all I got for that.
I'm good with this, but I'm concerned about the limiting nature of violence prevention. And I don't know if using the word crisis would be better, but I'm looking at opening up this to, for instances, again, not requiring a police officer where someone is needing help. Am I, is that a second different thing?
Mayor, I think I understand what you're talking about. And if a simple wording change would open up, you know, to discuss and address what you're talking about without a law enforcement approach, fully behind it.
I mean, I'm far this. I'm just concerned that it limits.
Sure. And I only use the verbiage right there because when we're talking about establishing just for the sake of like staff, so they don't have to start from the bottom.
I'm sorry, I'm still up at the number two.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. Other offices have referred to this particular office as violence prevention. But if y'all know that that's where to start as far as crafting this and we call it something different, that's just where that, that word came from. So if you prefer crisis prevention, I'm cool with that.
I would defer to the Chief and to Mr. Anderson, who knows way more about this than I do, especially if there had been.
I mean, like.
What if we don't? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, hold on. Go ahead.
Well, no, I was going to say, so I kind of, not to steal Dallas's thunder and Dallas's name, but I guess what Lonzo was saying, so the office that Dallas established is Integrated Public Safety Solutions, which I mean, it's vague, but it's also kind of all encompassing in my opinion. So I mean, maybe something similar to that, not necessarily stealing it, you know, word for word, but something that's kind of a broad, like all encompassing, public safety type name might actually kind of help solve the issue that Mayor, you know.
I think one of the things that might help us, just because this is goals and it's high level. And so if it's that we're going to establish an office or area focusing on the holistic approach, that leaves it more narrowly defined, I mean, more high level. And then we can come back, once we have all of that information and we look at the approaches and we look at all that, and that's when we can go through the formal naming process. It seems like that's a little more specific for this. I like the concept and I wanted to make sure that that was on record with the concept with it, but it just gives us some time to kind of focus on all of those specifics.
Exactly. I didn't want to come back and say, what about other things? And y'all say rightly so, but you said to focus on violence and I'm going, no, no.
So if we keep it broader like this, understanding what the intention is and then the strategies can maybe address some of the more specifics as far as like what this would, what this would be working towards, then we can do that as part of the strategies. And it also gives us some time again to formalize a proposal and a recommendation to council. And then we can have those conversations about specific naming, nomenclature and all of that a little bit later on. Does that work for council?
Yeah, because I'm on the Mental Health Court Advisory Board, so I knew we had that. I didn't know a lot of details, but the success rate that they are having with that is wonderful. And I'm going, man, if we just had all of those services to help people before they got into the court system, I'm glad we have it here. How can we catch people before that when they need help?
Yes, ma'am. No, that's a hundred. And I'm happy to hear my colleagues seem amenable to this. And so when we say establish an area, I would just, if it's okay with y'all, just explicitly saying office. That way we know, we don't have to call it anything. Do y'all, are y'all comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with office now, but it may come back with different terminology once it gels. But yeah, okay.
And I get your point. Or it may be, you know, so that's the thing, is it going to be a department? Is it going to be a division? Is it going to be? So that's the only reason why I was saying that, so if we want to leave it there as office, that's fine. Just understand that, you know, we may come back with different, uh, different words based on our organizational structure.
Good. Okay, so as written, partner with residents and key stakeholders to design and establish an office focusing on a holistic approach, proactive solutions and community driven initiatives.
On what? To focus on.
No, this is.
To achieving safety.
What's the, what are we focusing on is missing from the sentence.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, to focus on, and maybe we need that.
I had it written as to achieving safety. Now that's broad, but this is supposed to be high level. But at least it lets people know that all of those things combined are to help people feel safe.
Right. But how do we identify the situation that's going to need this solution?
Well, it sounds like that might happen in future conversations.
I'm okay. I'm just making note that we're missing a significant segment.
So what end are we doing?
Yeah. Who is it that we're looking to help? What are the situations that we want this to?
She's talking about Senate structure to be, to be more specific.
There's a few words missing, but I can wait and let people figure that out. But it's the thing that I was talking about, broaden it beyond violence. Again, I don't know that crisis is the right word, but I'm willing to let them work on it. But just make that notation.
Yeah, if it's to address or to focus on community safety or something like that, that's really all she's saying is that it needs to have a little something. And then we can get into, if it's crisis intervention, if it's mental health.
Safety is a result. What is, I'm stepping up more. What, when we get ready to do this, what are we looking for?
To have more community safety.
No, that's the result. That's the result.
That's the outcome.
Yes.
Yeah, I see what Hayden's trying to do. I think he's trying to merge. So I will say, I added a lot of specificity because I wanted to trigger in my head all the things that I'm seeing we're already doing. And then like just to name that you guys did pay attention when I was like calling for this like the last couple of years. So I think he put what I have put about the, what is it? Underlying factors contributing to crime such as poverty. We've talked about lack of education. Is that what is in there? Yeah. Limited access to mental health services through a holistic approach. Again, I think we made really big strides on that end. And then proactive solutions, community driven initiatives. I think that's like, what I'm taking is, would be something we haven't named and haven't like put it towards that, like especially the community driven initiatives. But to also add to that, I had another part that I'm already seeing be done. And I don't know if it's important to name, but and adjust public safety department staffing to support these initiatives because like we have began to do that. I think one, like the first step is like mental health officers or the, who else is it? There's like a whole bunch of ones, right? But I think.
The hot, the hot team, there's the public safety specialists.
Right. And I, but I think it's important to add the community driven initiatives with that other sentence because we've been approaching it. And again, I appreciate it. It's like, you know, change is gradual. In that traditional sense, which is like, okay, we want to address homelessness. What, what systems exist that could, we could more easily incorporate into our process? The hot team, right? But even with that, it's like we, there's additional supports that are not. They're more, I guess, community driven and imaginative that we could incorporate to like complement those efforts, right? But I do appreciate the creativity that staff has used to kind of address this while simultaneously balancing all the direction prior council has given about where to put safety resources, so.
So as written, partner with residents and key stakeholders to design and establish an office focusing, underlying factors contributing to crime such as poverty, lack of education and limited access to mental health services through a holistic approach, proactive solutions, community driven initiatives and adjusting public safety department staffing to support these initiatives effectively.
I feel like that's a solid attempt to intertwine two ideas with a lot of thoughts. But I think it's a good start, but I do think, yeah, we probably. Amanda, you're a good remixer. That was your job for a minute, right?
It is still.
Yeah.
I guess the only reason I didn't explicitly include adjusting public safety department staffing to support these initiatives effectively in this particular section was because into Chief Stanbridge's point, I am not suggesting all these things to add more work to officers' plates that weren't necessarily within their job description. And so I really wanted an emphasis on this being a non punitive, non carceral related office. But if this appeases my colleagues, I'm cool with that. I was just not trying to put more work on our public safety departments.
What if, what if we take out public safety department and just say, and adjusting staffing to support these initiatives? Or initiatives effectively?
I was going to say, I'd like to see this more standalone, not as part of the police.
And it could be, I mean, especially if you're saying. And and it could be, I mean, especially if you're saying it's an office. Again, that could be a division of a certain department, that could be a separate department, it could, so we just need to look at the structure. Um, but that leaves it open so that we can make sure that we have it um, in the right place and. The staffing is more broadly mentioned there, if if y'all are good with that.
Lonzo Anderson, Assistant City Manager, I would just recommend, and we pretty much have said it. Cuz really, we looked at the last twenty-five years of any type of evidence-based policing. Any type of solution that it can prove public safety, um, and there was a number of different items that were identified. But if we're gonna establish an office, it has to be a standalone office. For it to be beneficial to the community. There has to be a defined line between traditional methods versus non-traditional methods.
Yes, and and it's not to say that when we're talking about creating this, establishing it. That we're not getting the expertise of officers who have been out there to ha- you know, to to handle some of these issues. Um, we can definitely include them to make this the most uh, efficient thing possible. Um, but as far as, you know, application and those things, that was the only distinct, like I'm not sitting here trying to put more work on y'all's plates.
And and council member, what you will see is that even though it's a standalone office. There are still officers that are part of that office.
For sure.
There to move in that work forward on a daily basis.
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, we've heard it too, uh, officers, you know, when they go out on the ground, even with this most recent freeze. Their options, as it was mentioned yesterday by chief, their options are limited as far as where to take people to receive help. And so um, this gives them that opportunity, so there's definitely gonna be collaboration. Uh, but I just did not want it to explicitly say pu- uh, public safety department staffing. Um, this gives that that leeway as written now, and so if my colleagues are amenable to that.
Well, and I I think this is going to be an office that's going to be looking across the city. For assistance because of what people might need, because those needs are broadly defined.
Right, and.
Exactly.
That's what, you know, cuz we have other departments, you know, even within Mr. Carr's area. That deal with, they have a very big heart, you know, for working with um, all of our neighbors within the community and so they will, they also do some work. So it's a matter of trying to find out where is it best uh, situated to meet the outcomes and the objectives that we're hoping to do. Who's gonna be most well-received by um, by the community members who have the expertise, I mean, all of that and so. That's why I'm intentionally trying to get y'all to leave it a little broad.
Yeah.
Just because it gives us more time. Yes, it's important to mention it, to say that there's intentionality of of getting there. It's just a matter of giving, not not um, boxing us in to where then we don't have the latitude to do what it is that y'all are wanting to achieve.
Yeah.
For example, like, one of the teams that for sure that will be established upon this office. Is a team that will be looking at envi- environmental issues. And so that team will be looking at vacant lots, abandoned properties, substate structures. Inefficient lighting, lighting would be a big part of this conversation. But that team, that multidisciplinary team, will not only be PD, but it's gonna be code, it's gonna be transportation. It's gonna be police, we may have to have some zoning conversation as well too, in order just to move us. Uh, very forward into a modern contemporary light the way we need to. But it's gonna be, everything that they do would be multidisciplinary, it won't be just one single body that.
And that's exactly what I want, is a multidisciplinary approach. Um, and I really appreciate when City Manager Reyes talks about the community actually receiving these services. Um, you can't tell me, and I've talked to people, you can't tell me that not explicitly having a law enforcement present doesn't make people. Feel safer to come forward with things. It's so, so um, I appreciate my colleagues on this and I hope to have y'all's support with this one, as written.
Think we're ready, as it, as it's modified and written, partner with residents and key stakeholders to design and establish an office. Focusing on underlying factors contributing to crime such as poverty, lack of education and limited assets to mental health. Services through a holistic approach, proactive solutions, community-driven initiatives. And adjusting staff to support these uh, initiatives effectively. We'll start with you, Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember. Sal?
Sal?
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Council, Councilmember Ellis.
I'm a yes, and yeah, we're already making good progress, so I think this adds to it.
Thank you. And I don't want to leave out online, our council member.
I'm a yes.
Alright, thank you.
Before.
That was six yeses.
Before we move off of that page, could I boldly ask us to consider an addition on number one? It says adequately staff public safety departments to address community safety. Would you all be willing to say adequately staff and train? Public safety departments, and here's why. We have a rollout plan to become the first department in Texas that has all frontline personnel certified as mental health officers. But that's a fiscal commitment, and it would be really good if the council were behind that, plus. On March fifth, we roll out dignity and policing will also be the first. All of those things are designed to improve community safety through better trained officers. So I think one is insufficient when we just say staff, we need to staff and train. Thank you.
Got a person a second.
Would you be comfortable, I I do have one for the first one. And if you, we wanna workshop this together, we can workshop it together, but I think it kind of touches on what you're talking about. Um, and if it doesn't, let me know. Um, so I had for that one. Um, da-da-da-da-da, so it doesn't necessarily include, you know, pursuing new positions, but it does. Uh, develop a strategic approach that prioritizes the evaluation of current staffing levels, compensation structures. Overtime usage, budget allocations and turnover rates. Focus on optimizing existing resources and improving workforce retention, and if you want, and training. Rather than pursuing the creation of new positions.
Fully supportive, you just read my job description. So yes, fully supportive.
Yes, that was a lot of, oh Hayden has it, he's typing, he has it.
He's so good.
And and really this one again, and then I have another one that sort of gets into. But we want the people who are doing the work, as as somebody with a social work background, I understand. Um, I mean, I want people who are dealing with, sometimes the only way the city comes in contact with individuals is through our police department. And so making sure that people know how to properly engage with that and factor in. What that person may be going through and not just punitive, 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 so. Thank you.
And I wanna make sure, are we also going to, in addition, put training into the first?
I hope so.
That that's what I was gonna say, I mean, I I would like to to do that, to add training to the first one, cuz uh, the way I'm reading these. Bullet two, the the Hayden's working on now, almost sounds like it's, wh- which I mean, I guess it is budgetary concern, right? That's what we're, that's what we're here for. Um, but bullet two sounds more of a like cost-saving or, you know. The best way, you're getting the best bang for our buck, you know. Uh, as opposed to, I think, but adding training bullet one is more just prioritizing, uh, uh, to chief's point. Um, not only having an adequate number of staff, but making sure that they're they're properly trained to do their job.
I don't think that was clear, um, this one was replacing one.
The only thing, to me, those are. They're not the same. I would, I would still say, it's still important to say that it's important to adequately staff, again, we. Based on staffing studies and yes, we've talked about having a different, a different mechanism for doing our staffing studies. Based on that, um, I would say that we wanna make sure we're not losing sight of of that overall. While we're still working on these other things as well. So I would say that it would make more sense, in in my opinion, to say. Adequately staff and train public safety departments to address community safety. And then I think two is a standalone, cuz the only other thing that I'm, that's giving me a little bit of pause. I like all of number two, the only part that gives me pause is rather than pursuing the creation of new.
And you know, that was my language, I'm not gonna hide it, um, that was my language and if I'm all behind compromises. Um, and so if we want to get rid of that language, um, as a compromise, we can.
I just think that last part, because that doesn't, this speaks to, I know we're we're looking at it more in the police uh, realm. But this also goes to fire.
Yeah.
This goes to marshal, this goes to even some of the stuff that Greg Carr does. So again, just wanna make sure that we're we're not narrowly uh, boxing ourselves in on that.
I'm fine with that, it was more of a philosophical thing, but yeah, I'm all behind compromise and I'm happy to see the the rest of it.
Wait, wait, hang on, yes.
I th- I'm, I agree, and and I put and train on the table and I'd like it to stay there. I'm good with the second one, except it what you just said. Because we're a growing community. Last year, my State of the City speech, it said we had gained sixteen thousand people in three years. We're gonna need more more people to do this and other things, so. I I I I can't go that last clause.
That's fine, like I, like I said, that was more of a philosophical thing. Um, I've never been not candid on philosophically speaking, I I'm not trying to hurt fire either. Cuz I find fire and EMS and all those things very critical services. Um, just for philosophical reasons for the public, uh, I'm an abolitionist. So that's why I had that last portion, but as a compromise with my colleagues, uh, I'm fine leaving it as is, both one and two.
Did we have any further comments over here, I believe? Good, alright, alright, so do we want to talk about um, the vote on two, or we'll do one first then two?
Well, I I had something on two, and I mean, I guess now that the Councilmember Rodriguez is fine with leaving it as it is, I. I don't necessarily wanna beat her drum since it was, you know, it was her thing, but um. Cuz I was, I was actually gonna mention something uh, as far as the rather than, I forgot what it was, but I guess rather than creating new positions. Um, that kind of, to the city manager's point, I I felt like it did kind of box us in and. Forbid us from creating new positions, and I I'm not the wordsmith that some of my colleagues are, but. Um, I was thinking something more like doing all of these things before thinking of creating new positions. So if we've, if we've done everything to optimize existing resources but still need more resources. Then we'll look at creating new positions, but prioritize optimizing this and improving retention and training. Prior to. Looking into creating new positions, I guess, however you wanna wordsmith that, but I mean. My colleagues are okay with the way it is now without putting that extra ca- uh, caveat, then I'm fine with leaving it as it is as well.
Or, I mean, is, how do, how do y'all feel about that? Well, I know that, but how do you feel about it?
I think we have a comment.
I think what I, what I'm hearing from Councilmember Gonzalez does speak to what he's saying um, as well with this. Um, cuz it's developing a strategic approach that prioritizes the evaluation of current staffing levels. So to me, that is exactly what what is capturing and what he's saying is that you wanna make sure you're optimizing the staff you already have first. Before you on and add, so I think that that helps us get there um, with what's there without boxing us in. Um, and so that, that's what I, only thing that I would uh, interject there.
Go ahead.
Um, and Councilman Gonzalez, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like at the end of the second one. Where it talks about focusing on optimizing existing resources and so on. Um, all it's saying is to explicitly look at, what do we already have? Are we simply basing, needing more officers simply on the basis of population growth? Because i- if that logic is true for this. I mean, that logic could be for any of these departments when it comes to staffing. And we don't see that same energy when it comes to creating new positions for that, to alleviate some of that help too. And in my opinion, all of those things are equally contributing to public safety. So this is just more so being, in my opinion, being a good steward and really looking at what do we have now and financially speaking, are we ready to move forward?
And and the only thing I would say is again, that's true when it comes to police. Um, that's not necessarily true when you're looking at all the other departments. The other thing is, is that we do take into consideration those growth factors with permitting, parks, any of those things. It doesn't mean that we have the money to be able to fund everything, but that is definitely a decision point when um. The departments are advocating for what they need in their areas. Growth and service area is always a big part of what they say. Um, it's just what money do we have to go around? And so that typically is how we are able to then balance what comes back to council is based on your priorities.
Given budget limitations, that's what's gonna happen here anyway, I don't think we need to say it.
I. We're talking, we're one and two, right? That's what kind of, okay, so for two, um. I think it would be helpful to say it and with the understanding that it's like for anything that's related to safety. Um, but I do understand like on a case-by-case basis where there's like things that are more um. Time-sensitive or like it's uh, maybe it's like we don't have to wait for all of that, you know, to. Nothing is basically stopping departments, any departments, police and otherwise, from coming to us. And making that case, and I feel like that's kind of already the practice a little bit. Um, but I do think naming that gives us um. It gives us something to uh, be able to reflect on intentionally the next year, does that make sense? At least for me, it's like, sometimes I like to leave little breadcrumbs, that way I could go back and be like, oh. This is something that we named and we should probably be actively reflecting on it throughout the year. That that's how, that's how it's worked in my job, so I I'm cool with that. Uh, prior to creating new positions, with the understanding that y'all can, like, anybody could bring. Time-sensitive, important, like the zombie apocalypse, you know, we need to have a, I don't know, you know what I mean? But for one, I don't know if we, did we already vote on that, on the staff and train, cuz I'm.
We haven't did one nor two yet.
Uh, cuz they're kind of similar, I'm I'm good with keeping the the staff and train. Public safety departments to address community safety, um, I know chief mentioned like mental, the mental health, I think, officers and stuff. I think it's like uh, across the board, I think invest, if we, the staff already exists, they're there, might as well. Make sure that they have the best resources that they need to um, to do their job, I feel like that makes sense to me. Uh, and then with the understanding that every, every time we come together to. Uh, reflect on the progress, one and two might change, might end up merging, you know, we don't know, but. Yeah, I'm comfortable keeping them, keeping one and two with the prior to creating new positions, I think they balance each other out really well.
Okay.
And the only other thing, again, because I'm not, I'm I'm on board with where y'all are, I just don't want the unintended consequence. Because even if you go to three, three inherently is probably gonna mean we're gonna have to hire additional staff. So we're already saying in the bullet before, evaluate all these things and and I'm gonna tell you what my workforce is gonna look at, they're gonna look at and go. They're gonna be asking me to do more within my job description, because they wanna maximize what I'm doing now. Without before creating additional positions, and so that's what, that's what is giving me pause. So again, not trying to belabor it because I I value the great dialogue and the work that we've done. But I feel like that can send the wrong kind of message, especially since number three inherently is alw- already gonna look like we're gonna have to hire. Additional people to handle those functions.
Right, but I do feel like for number three, it's almost like, because we would have to engage in. Um, the process, like the of exploring, that. It's almost like standalone, like we give ourselves the permission to um. Engage in that process of how we would set this up, like um, what it needs to succeed, like the the bare bones. And then with the understanding that. We are, we have things like number two because we have to uh, be mindful of. How to best use the resources, like I don't know if I'm articulating myself well, but I do, I I think. It's not as like dichotomous as prior to creating new positions. And then it's like, well, that's automatically, uh, you can't, we're not giving ourselves the permission to. Be imaginative for number three, like I I don't, I don't think it's that black and white. But I understand, we don't want to fall into that trap, but. I don't know, I feel like. There's like a balanced way to do it, like, hey, we don't want to be like, we want. All these people and like a balloon, uh, like a, uh, balloon artist to make like clowns to do community outreach, like no, right? It's like.
We can't do it any, I mean, we can't afford to do a bunch anyway, so to me, it's just taking that out. So that we're not looking like we're, I'm automatically going against your policy.
Yeah, and I, I, the intent is definitely not to tie anybody's hands or give people more work than they already have, for sure. Um, and if it helps, like for the record, making that clear that that is not the intent of this wording. Um, that staff can still have the ability and leverage to fill new positions, create new positions. This is purely just showing people that we're not just creating positions to create them, we're being intentional. And so it's not with the intent, for the record, it's not with the intent to tie people's hands. Um, just like anything, I mean, year after year, we're working, as you know, in a budget deficit. And so this is just letting people know that, uh, part of being a good financial steward is to evaluate and see, are we doing things the right way, you know? So if, if that, does that make it? Yeah, the intent, just for the record, is not to tie anybody's hands or anything like that. It's just letting people know that we care about looking at what we have.
Okay, we can look at number one first.
Let's take a vote.
Yes, okay, number one first, adequately staff and train public safety departments to address community safety. I'll start online first. With Councilmember Gonzalez.
I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
I feel like one and two, like, is someone too related? Uh, yes. With, with the understanding that we're doing something related to, to which I think there's some energy to that, so yes, 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 yes.
Thank you. Another clean six, awesome, thank you. The next is develop a strategic approach that prioritizes the evaluation of current staffing levels, compensation structures. Overtime usage, budget allocations and turnover rates. Focus on optimizing existing resources and improving workforce retention and training. I'll begin online again with Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll, I'm a yes.
Okay, yes. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, and Councilmember Amanda, yes, okay, sweeping six, thank you. Okay, we have down under outcome A, under three. Optimize the use of technology to improve community safety and we have. Yes, Councilmember Amanda.
Um, yes ma'am, thank you. Uh, so for item three, we hinted on this yesterday, but this is just codifying it. Um, when we talk about optimization, yes, but we live in a digital world and. Unfortunately, as we know with the two factor authentication that the city has implemented, we need guidelines and boundaries. And so this would edit that item to clearly mention that if we're gonna do this, we need to establish. Clear guidelines and protections governing the use of technology to ensure transparency, accountability. And most importantly, obviously most importantly is not included, uh, with, uh, in respect for civil rights. Yes ma'am, but it was actually not to strike that, um, when we, I, I wanted to leave the optimize the use of technology to improve community safety. All of this is saying that if we're going to do that, we're also going to acknowledge that we need to have some clear, clear guidelines on how that's to be used. With respect to people's civil rights. I just feel like that's, that those two go hand in hand.
You're talking about technology, you sound like you're talking about overall and I'm, I was gonna say this is in the public safety section.
Oh no, I'm aware.
That was your attempt.
I'm aware, yes ma'am. Yeah, this is specific to technology that's used regarding, uh, community safety.
The, the only thing that.
I mean, we have flock cameras, we have, uh, we have, the police department's had a lot of technology recently, even the uses of drones. And so, um, all this is saying is that as we continue to.
I get it.
Yeah.
So I, the only, the only part that I'm gonna need to just get a little bit of clarification on. I, no, no problem with the first part of it. It's the, the respect for civil rights and this, this is the only, uh, caveat. That we, that we struggle with even with our workforce is because of like multi-factor authentication. And if they read this and we have a job to secure our infrastructure, you know, and our technology systems. And so some would argue that us making them do multi-factor authentication is going against their civil rights and some have argued that. And so that's the only thing that I want to just caveat, um, we're working on, you know, kind of, uh, making sure that our employees. Um, you know, know when they're coming onto the city that we are an employer that values cybersecurity. And so that they would be expected to do those things, um, if they come, if not, if that's not something they want to do, then they wouldn't work for, you know, for the city necessarily, maybe. But that's the only thing, I just want to make sure that that's clear, that it's, you're talking about the public.
Yes.
You're not talking about the, the, the employee part of it, so I just, we need to figure out how to say that. While, while capturing your interest, but still making sure it's not, um, gonna go against policy stuff we have.
If we want to, to workshop that in respect for civil rights, uh. As it relates to residents or, um. Or this, uh, in respect for s- the resident civil rights, however we want to emphasize like the population that we're talking about. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that. I think there's a way to, to workshop it. I, a- again, like, uh, I've been pretty open about also, uh. Uh, navigating as an abolitionist, but I have a guilty pleasure and I'm a true crime girlie. Um, I spend most of my time, uh, just looking at situations related to public safety. That happen in other communities and when it comes to technology, uh, one of the, the things. That's like a, a trend that I've seen as a mechanism for, um. Solving crime is having those clear guidelines for the use of technology. So I know I've brought up like body camera footage in other contexts, but there's other things even like how do we retain? Um, and store other information, um, and then also. Kind of like, um, yeah, resident privacy is a right. Um, I, I'm just trying to make the point that I, I get the energy of like how people feel. Uh, needing the guidelines to measure how people feel about their civil rights, which I think is very important. But I also think, I just want to name that the, the clear guidelines. Are also gonna help us be able to know what changes or additional, um. Technology we need to be able to use that in ways that help, uh. Solve crime, does that make sense, like?
Yeah, and, and, and it absolutely makes sense. It's just, um, and obviously a legal. You know, I just don't want it legally to be used against us by our employees. And so that's the only thing that I'm trying to do is just, uh, again, the first part is, is all fine as far as clear guidelines, protections. Governing the use of technology to ensure transparency, accountability and respect for privacy or whatever that is. Uh, or personal, I don't know, but it's just, it's something that I just don't want it to legally be used against us for policies that we put. Um, for our employees, so maybe, maybe Sam can help us, uh, kind of word, wordsmith it a little bit to get to y'all's intent. While it doesn't create, uh, an unintended thing for us to regulate our employees.
And while we're working on that, I understand why we put resident in. Not everyone who comes to our community is a resident. I don't want to. I want to be more inclusive.
I like that, that's a great point.
I think residents and visitors may not quite be right, but maybe just people.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
I like that. And if we have to explicitly say within this, like, um, not including like employees or however the legal jargon needs to be. Uh, written to keep us within the bounds of, you know, the law, I'm, I'm fine with that. But I, you do make a fantastic point that everybody, not just residents, should be afforded the same, afforded the same protections. Yes ma'am, yeah, I like that, I like that.
I think we have a comment from staff.
Well, I. Are we going to distinguish employees from the community? Is that, is that really the main objective here? Because it's really just privacy and civil rights of, of residents or, or not residents of. Uh, community members. Or the public.
I like that, the public.
The public because it's all people who pass through our borders.
I know, cause I, I, I'm getting some of my directors looking at me because I know we have had these conversations. We've even had to go through and do different multi-factor authentication, uh. Things that cost us money because people are refusing to do it. But it's something, again, when you are dealing with public infrastructure and all of that that we have to protect. So I just don't want to take away that right and I think as long as we say have respect for the privacy and civil rights of the public. Right? And I think that does make sense. If y'all, if y'all do that, then that, I think that helps to get what your interest is and doesn't take away from our ability to.
Is the, is the terminology civil rights going to?
Yeah.
Be an issue?
Well, I think by already the, the police department, for example, but anything we do at the city with the public. Even if we don't say in the statement, right, we have, uh, civil rights statutes and laws that govern our, our actions. So I don't know that really goes outside the bounds. It's, it's more concerned from the policy perspective. If, if you believe you're creating an expectation that's too, uh, unrealistic or something along those lines. But I think legally, that, that's our obligation already. By law, but it's more about how you want to convey a certain message.
I'm thinking. With, uh, the civil rights is limiting. And that somebody's gonna focus on that, then you have to go look it up and whatever. If what we're talking about is personal privacy, then let's say personal privacy of the public. And, and leaving out civil rights, I think broadens it and leaves less question and less. Ability to pick it apart.
I'm wondering how this will affect our single use. Could somebody come back and say, well, you know, you're violating my civil rights because of the single use container? I'm just wondering where some frivolous things will come up because they want to use it as.
So I, I guess a couple of things, these are strategies.
What about these single use to, um, the, like, okay, parks, that's getting into the paper grade parking. I'm just wondering how this can be used against us in any department.
You don't have.
So, but these are high level, um, you know, really high level goals and strategies that you're trying to achieve. Uh, you know, in the perfect world and then all of these are gonna be distilled down to actual ordinances. Policies and, and, and initiatives that are gonna be filtered through state law and federal law. So again, I, I, I'm not worried legally about the consequences of, of somebody using this statement. As, as a, as a basis to, you know, challenge a, an ordinance, for example, or enforcement of an ordinance such as, uh. The single use container ordinance, but, um, so again, I think it comes down to more of. How you want to characterize your, your. Your desires for the city manager to implement. I think that's what it comes down to. And if you think it's too broad or too narrow, that's really the prerogative of the council, but I, from the legal standpoint, I don't have. Tremendous heartburn over that, at that level.
Putting civil rights in there complicate matters.
If, if my colleagues are stuck on those two words, uh, okay, uh, we can. Uh, and, and I don't, and I agree, if it's limiting it, that's not my intent. Um, the only reason I really put that is so when the public, and I'm happy to hear that that's obviously what's always on the forefront of our mind is protecting those rights. I was, that's the only reason I included is just to explicitly say that that's where we're focused on doing. But if you feel it limits it, um, I'm all for, uh, potential edits. Do not touch the rest, that's all I'm saying, yeah.
Was there a comment online? Was there a comment online for the council member?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Okay, was there another comment over here?
I've got a comment real quick.
Yes.
Just, just a clarification, so where it says to ensure transparency, um, and Councilwoman, you specifically mentioned drones. So we use drones extensively in the investigation of crimes. Most recently, the overnight call out that we had. When those drones go up, they become a governmental record and they become part of a criminal investigation. All governmental records will eventually be made public and so I don't want us to create this expectation that. It, we're gonna be transparent always with everything that we do as it relates to technology. Instead, we're gonna have to follow the requirements as it allows, relates to open records request. And we will sometimes seek exceptions to releasing any technology if it's specific to an ongoing criminal investigation.
And I would hope as written, that doesn't tie your hands in, in following those procedures. All of this, all this is really saying is that when we establish those guidelines, it's clear on how those things are to be used now. As far as the releasing of information, I don't expect it to be timely every single time. I understand that there's legal limitations to, to that. Um, this is just simply saying that when we're actually going to be doing those things, we have clear guidelines on how we're using them.
And, and one comment I have following, following up on that is that really every initiative, not just this paragraph we're talking about. But the entire, uh, package of what the council's looking at today, i- i- it sort of goes. Without saying, but I'm saying it, and that is it's all filtered through whatever federal and state laws are gonna tie our hands. There may be initiatives from the state that may, uh, prevent us from doing some of the things the council may want to do. We've seen the preemption bills, we've seen specific statutes that, uh, are very prescriptive. With what cities may and may not do in the law enforcement realm, right? And so, a- again, I think these are high level standards, but yes, we're not gonna override the requirements of, for example. Uh, statutes governing body worn cameras, drones, uh, uh, public information actor quests and so forth. So I, I don't have tremendous heartburn, uh, from these being high level. Aspirations really that are gonna dictate how the city manager.
Policies that govern how we use the technology. So that's, that's just a best practice. If you're gonna use something, then we should have policies that govern the use of it, so. I don't, I don't have a problem with it from an operational standpoint. The only parts I had trouble with, we've addressed and, and I'm, I'm fine.
Uh, I appreciate you bringing that up, Chief. Um, I think like Amanda said, there's still those processes and like, um, city attorney said. Um, and we'll follow them and I, I do think it was important to name however, because there was a lot, there has been a lot of. Conversation and confusion regarding what, what all is, um, releasable and whatnot. Just like, uh, even within us, like what can we get privy to as council members versus the public and all that? And I think we're, we've worked through that, like responses to different expectations of our community. Alongside our, um, city attorney in a way that is legal and also, um. We starting to like put those in, in, uh, more like procedures, like so we know if, if situations happen, like what all. We have access to and we're like fleshing it out altogether, so I, I think, um, yeah, but with that in mind, I appreciate you bringing that up. So we don't get things twisted later, yeah.
We have a comment from.
Yeah, just before we move on, if I could please ask Councilmember Garza and Hernandez, uh, or excuse me, Gonzalez. I believe both of y'all said you are abolitionists and I know I'm gonna be asked by my staff to expound on that. And I'd rather hear it from you instead of having to explain it for you.
So, uh, uh, I'm gonna answer real quick, cause I, I could send you something and we can put this on, uh, a billboard if you want outside. Um, so I'm just naming that to say this is not, cause I don't want to answer. I, brevity is not my forte. I do not know how to be succinct. But, uh, happy to put together something and some additional readings for, for those who find this. Topic intriguing or foreign, um, and I, and I'm also just not in a good headspace, uh. I just got news of a loss in my family, so I'm, I'm not trying to. Uh, force myself to have good pedi, pedagogy. uh, force myself to have good pedagogical skills in how to present information. I suck at it.
I appreciate the question genuinely. I uh, you know, these are conversations I had with the city manager too, because I understand when a lot of people hear that term, it's like a oh, you just hate police, you must hate safety and those things, right? Abolition is of course a theory, it's a practice. Uh, but really it's, it's really the question that you, you're constantly asking on how are we really accomplishing and achieving safety? It doesn't mean simply that we want to see simply the end of prisons and policing and that's it. There has to be something that replaces it. But what we're asking, that the something that replaces it really focuses on how to take care of people without those punitive ways, without those, same way we were talking about social services. Those things are rooted in abolition because they get to the root of things. And so all we're saying is that we've seen for so long that the way we want to, I mean, chief said it yesterday, we can't arrest our way out of things. And so all this is saying is let's take a different look, let's take a look that actually prioritizes the needs of people. And I know it, it typically is a taboo thing, but all of that's rooted in wanting true safety, wanting true ideas that actually accomplish that. That understands all of the societal things involved as to why people end up in the justice system. And so that's really what it is, it's, it's rooted in love, it's rooted in care. And um, I appreciate the question because oftentimes, like I said, it can seem taboo. It really can, you know my mom, she was in law enforcement for 26 years. I don't tell a lot of people that as an abolitionist. But she did that for so long, thinking that that was the only solution to something. Now, all these years, she calls herself an abolitionist because she realizes that and, and personally having loved ones go through these systems and knowing that these systems don't rehabilitate people. We've already talked about all of the barriers that exist after you get in pure contact with those systems. And so again, it's, it's rooted in care, it's rooted in love, and it's rooted in finding alternatives. And so I'd be happy to talk to you more about it, recommend some good books, articles. But yeah, thank you for the question.
Thank you, and I appreciate the response and taking it seriously. Again, our workforce, they come from a lot of different backgrounds and they have their own ideas and philosophies. And I just didn't want to have to try to unpack that for you and speak for you, so I appreciate you taking the time to respond.
Yeah, and I appreciate the question coming from, from you last. I feel like um, this other day when I was talking with the Lonzo and Stephanie, it was like sand drilling over you, I feel like you and your team, uh, because some of, some of, I've met some of your, your staff like out at community um, uh, events, like the public health fair, and they've asked me. And so I think that, that that's important. I was going to tee this up at another venue, but I, I, I Max and I did like town hall, one town hall, it was exhausting to be honest. In the past where we explored that, and I, I think um, yeah, I want to do something like that where we could have like a dialogue and not just have this venue to explore that, because even with Ms. Rodriguez's her explanation as, as to how she identifies and why she identifies with uh, abolition is a little bit different from mine, so I think there's a lot to your point. A lot of different folks from different backgrounds who have different conceptualization of terms. So we always ask staff, oh, can you help us uh, better understand all these terms that folks who don't engage with the government might not be knowledgeable on, so I think that us explaining important frameworks to our constituents is something that we should dive into more. I think the time's now to have that conversation too.
Yeah, and I think that's why I appreciate the questions, because you asked this in a public forum. You know, so for people watching who hear that word and may not know, or who hear that word and it may be taboo, it gives them an opportunity to hear that. I mean, I would agree, you probably have been in your job for so long because you care about safety. You want to make sure that people in this town feel safe, and I appreciate that, I respect that. And so it sounds like, you know, much of your philosophy and my philosophy align in that way. We want to see safety. It's just uh, being willing to be imaginative and really figure out what are other ways we can do that? You know, that don't, that aren't so rooted in punishment. It's like with a child, think about it like, like an analogy with a child. If all I do is sit there and my child may not be behaving right, and I'm just punishing them simply on the, on the hope that, okay, maybe they'll change one day. At some point, you got to switch up your methods, you know, you got to figure out, does that child just need a different way to be loved? Does it, do they have needs that need to be addressed? And that's really what abolition is about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have the vote. Um, as it's written, optimize the use of technology to, to improve community safety. Establish clear guidelines and protections governing the use of technology to ensure transparency, accountability, and respect for the personal privacy of the public. All right, so we'll start down here, yes? Yes? Councilmember, Alyssa, yes? Yes, yes, yes. And I don't want to forget, we have a thumbs up from councilmember Gonzalez. All right, thank you so much. That brings us right now to 12:05. Um, in the essence of time, do we want to do a working lunch possibly? Maybe break for about 10, 15 minutes so you can go get the lunch and then we'll start back and proceed on? Does that work for everyone? All right, let's do that. Of course, I'll, I'll set the timer, give us about 15 minutes to grab food. Um, I do want to go first, I can eat. Thank you. Get back started.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. Um, just a reminder, um, mics are live and we do want to also just say thank you to Elizabeth for providing and making sure we had lunch and breakfast for these past two days. Thank you, everybody, let's give her a round of applause. Okay, so we are back at um, Public Safety Corps Services and Fiscal Excellence. Just as a reminder, that goal statement is deliver quality government services and improve community safety in a fiscally responsible manner with a professional workforce. Uh, we left off, we are under outcome A, still under item five. And that is enhance emergency management by increasing all hazards and disaster preparedness, response, and recovery through coordination and local partnerships and intergovernmental cooperation. And I have a, a post-it that says, what's the plan? What's the plan? And again, it's under outcome A. You under five, under outcome A, under strategy, the strategy was that there are several strategies under community safety. So, community safety, collaborate to prioritize and enhance public safety services while building resiliency and trust within our community. This was by five. Um, enhance emergency management by increasing all hazards and disaster preparedness, response. Oh, was it, wait, yeah, that's where it was, it was by five, did you mean it to go to four?
Give me one second. I have one, right? Yeah.
So did you mean four?
Oh, I did have one for four, but it's not that, it's not that posted.
Okay.
But I also think for four, that's kind of already um, uh, kind of not. Sorry, so did you want, are you doing post-its or are we doing going down the sheet?
Did you, you gave Hayden some specific um, verbiage?
Yeah, that
Okay, so we can go definitely straight to that. So oh, you deleted it, okay.
That's what we just put in.
So this post-it was under what's now six.
Right, but what I'm saying is Oh no, that's four. Is, yeah, what I'm saying is I have something else for four that has nothing to do with the post-it, what I'm asking, you're asking about the post-it right now, not about, we're not going down in order by the document.
Correct, um, I didn't know you gave, you've given specific information, so you gave something in addition to what you had posted here, is that what I'm hearing?
Okay, so there's
Just pick one and go with it.
Okay. Um, so there's the, the post-it that you're marking. Wait, wait, pre-get pause. Why did we delete the addressing?
Yes.
What? We had decided on that before, right? The, or what?
Hold on, he'll get the mic and so you can
Okay, so that has, that has nothing to do with you marking off the addressing mental health, right? You just moved that up to the other part.
Did you mean to just add to the beginning? Let's see, what you sent me says strengthen community engagement and trust through expanded programs and partnerships employing strategies to reach diverse populations.
Yeah, but that's like standalone, like I wasn't trying to replace anything.
Okay, you weren't trying to, okay.
No, sorry for the numbers.
Okay.
And that also has nothing to do with the post-it, so I just
Got it, got it. So there's no amendments on this one then, correct, sounds like? Under expand programs and partnerships that engage the community and strengthen community trust, including employing strategies for reaching diverse populations, addressing mental health, and exploring community-based intervention methods to improve community safety. Do you have any comments or anything around that one?
Wait, did? I'm so confused right now.
On your sheet, it's probably four.
If my colleague needs some time, I have one for an additional outcome, if that helps you.
Um, no, um, I just want to know, what did you copy and paste it into where? Did you already? Oh, I see.
So these are renumbered because we added an additional one earlier. So this number five is what used to be four.
Yes, 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 okay.
And number, yes.
Yes, um, okay, so back to your original question was the post-it.
What's the plan?
Yeah, yeah, and that was under the safety, the emergency response.
Correct.
And Hayden added my, my blurb, right? Yeah, that's it, that was it. Because so I, I put plans and basically I have expressed like or I have asked for different plans for things like freezes and then like past plans on like lessons learned and reflections on like the floods and stuff, and so I think it, with that through those, looking through what exists and what have been sent, and then also working through the pandemic and then the multiple freezes, I think it's, it's important that we come up with operations that don't super duper rely on a lot of um, external entities, I feel like my, the, the answer to some of my concerns was like the coad. Um, but recognizing that, that, that rationale for that was because of like, we can't be everything for everybody and we don't have the funding. But I think ensuring reliance on external entities only when absolutely necessary, I think that's like, we should endeavor to get to that point at some point, so that's why I put that in there, but
Thank you. And see, I read that differently, was that we didn't want external help ever. So yeah.
No, 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 no.
Which didn't make sense to me, so I'm glad you explained it, but I think we're going to need to, to reword it, is becoming more self-sufficient or, okay.
Yeah.
So we don't need them as often.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes, that's different.
And uh, the, thank you guy, he's not here, right? Okay, yeah, so I think for me, it's just fleshing out more the importance of what the manager said, I guess self-sufficiency or something, but that's all I got, I was hoping you'd be here so I could get an update as to like where we're at in general to know if it's like necessary to put in the strategic plan or if there was going to be like a general update. I haven't heard a lot of updates regarding emergency response like in general in a minute.
Lonzo Anderson, Assistant City Manager. I did have critical conversations with the leadership that's in the office of emergency management. So back in 2021, they did start to establish a training program for the office. Uh, most of that was centered around uh, emergency preparedness. And, and since that time, starting in 2022, most of their training that they delivered, most of their partnerships that, that they connected with was around critical infrastructures. And then in 2023, after reviewing uh, some, some different uh, program and uh, they started to concentrate on delivering human life and property type of training to our workforce. And then in 2024, they saw more full-scale exercise training for active attack, and that was incorporated into the community here. And then in 2024, we focused on cyber and physical security for cr- critical infrastructures as well as crisis leadership. And one of those crisis leadership was just last week that we had here in, in the city of San Marcos. And we also are starting to look at 2025 and 2026 about possible leadership and connection and workforce uh, partnerships that we can deliver not only to our team here for the city of San Marcos, but to the community at large as well too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess my intention there is just to name that, I mean, at least for me, I think it's important that we put more resources into emergency preparedness and that I feel like inherently is to reduce the reliance on external entities. When it comes to even gauging how to, uh, when I say external entities, I honestly mean like non-governmental entities. I think that they carry a lot of the weight sometimes of like even knowing what the community needs are, or depending on them to information gather even, um, it's stuff like that, reliance on non-governmental entities, yeah. That's what I meant.
Okay.
Um, and what I hear is like, oh, we're like, we don't, we have to prioritize what you all have in like the vision in which you've mentioned and budgeting that, but I think naming that, we need to pour more into that with the intention of lessening the burden to our non-governmental entities.
Can you maybe clarify what you mean by that a little bit on the reducing the reliance on the non-governmental entities?
Yeah, so if you think back to the floods or the freezes, I, I feel like, and my perception just being on the ground on both, is that there was a lot of response that was done, I mean, sometimes by folks who like, that's not their area of expertise either. And also like the, even like the information sharing networks, and I understand that part of a community is to lean on partners, but also knowing how fragile the systems are right now and are going to continue to be to even keep a lot of those non-governmental entities doors open, like perhaps we should invest more on how are we going to, a game plan on how we're going to even gauge what is happening during these emergencies when we cannot depend a lot on the folks on the ground to make the time to tell us, right? So just, I, I guess if you're looking for examples, it's like the example of during the, one of the freezes, when there was like the rolling blackout, Mr. uh, Leeson and I were out there and we were like noticing some trends about how in some places where the power was coming back on and like certain spots it wasn't, and then it was like the neighbors were telling us like, oh, there's, this is an issue, whatever, whatever, and when if we hadn't pestered John, we would have not found out that the reason that was happening is because some of, I think, um, what are they, the not the generators, the, the, yeah, we've had this conversation, the transformers like blew and because they were old, it's like stuff like that, like or that facility that was like abandoned. And nobody would have known about that had their out of town people not put out pleas to Facebook and we had told John, and I know we can't be everywhere at all times, but put out pleas to Facebook and we had told John, and I know we can't be everywhere at all times, but the a lot of, my point is a lot of the nonprofits that helped keep our neighbors alive during these emergencies, like we can't keep burdening them to do that and not increasing their funding, so it's either we we put money towards the systems to fill those roles or we give the nonprofits more resources.
Councilmember Joe Pantalone, Assistant City Manager. Um, having worked in flood control almost my entire career, I have worked a lot of federally declared disasters, um, both for the planning of them, walking through the neighborhoods while the flooding was happening, uh, talking to our our, you know, flood survivors um, in this region. And when it comes to the the NGOs, uh, especially when we establish shelters, um, I I I hear what you're saying and I think that's a very valid point for the NGOs that have limited resources. And I it may be a matter of us working to understand their capabilities because there are some NGOs that.
Really don't buy full-price stuff, I would go for like.
We have some.
Sell or have a coupon. Uh, but. Whoever's driving the Zoom, can they like mute whoever?
Yeah, there there are some NGOs that thrive in that space and there are others that see this, you know, as just an unexpected burden for their staff and so I I I very much get it and
Yeah.
Uh, and so I think if if maybe we can focus this to rightsizing and then having a strategic use, cause I I'll give you one example. I had a, I I worked in two different communities where one, if there was a disaster, Red Cross was embraced, right? And I know you're not talking Red Cross, you're talking about the local ones, right?
Their jobs literally are urgency response.
But looking at that language up there, Red Cross is a non-governmental entity.
Right, but this is high level, like I'm not gonna break down all of them, but like I get it, and I get that in other in other places. Where were you before in Austin or?
Austin, Richardson and.
And there's a lot of nonprofits and and I do know I have plenty of friends in better resourced communities, they love it, like I was just talking to Chief about how my mom is like a dopamine chaser, like there's some people are wired like that. But what I'm saying is, this has been an ask of nonprofits as well, like they cannot be showing up in the capacity they have for freezes, um, the floods. It's unsustainable is what I'm saying, so I wanted to name that in of like a broad sense. Um, but also hoping that it inspires or amplifies the importance of talking to these nonprofits beyond external entities like the coad. Um, so that y'all can understand where this messaging is coming from as well. Um, and also I think the increase in um, concern is is that a lot of these non-governmental entities are having to deploy their resources right now. Um, during these events, but also with the understanding that a lot of their federal and state funding that they've have grown accustomed to is is probably gonna be cut, um, like yesterday, literally they were locked out of their portals, right? Um, so that's why I think it's important.
The only thing that I would say is just that it's 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 ensuring because when we think about the city's response in an emergency management situation and depending on the different phases of of that disastrous situation, um, this seems all-encompassing and there's gonna be more appropriate times where, yes, the city could take a more of a lead role. But during an actual disaster response, when we're going through things at the very beginning, our role is more to make sure that, you know, the infrastructure and all the things that we're focusing on. And so we rely very, very heavily on our nonprofit partners to work together, cause we know we can't be all places at all times. They're gonna know um, because of who they serve on a more regular basis, uh, who those faces are that they need to interact with, like if it's even about meals on wheels or medications or, you know, things that they do with people or oxygen or, you know, we don't necessarily have the same knowledge and so I would that's that that's something I would just hate to be an unintended consequence of this seeming more broad-reaching. Um, because I think we're still gonna have to work on our partnership. Is is there another part of that that you want us to do, if it's still about better communication and coordination with them? Or is it, even if it's, you know, looking at um, how they're structured, how we're structured, I mean, even that the South Side, with South Side being our flagship um, homeless shelter, that in and of itself is a non-governmental entity that we have contracted with to work on on that. So I just wanna make sure again that we're on the same page in terms of what is possible. I don't want us to be set up for an un- for a uh, failure.
Yeah, cause there were a number of folks that came in from out of town that this is what they do during the twenty fifteen, at least the first flood, Samaritan's Purse, Texas Baptist Men that's been renamed, uh, an Amish um, organization. But they came for that, that's preparing what they do, with inserting the word local help.
Perhaps, but like even even the fact that part of our response plan is like, man, I hope that during, when things get bad, I I hope that one of these entities will throw us a bone and come set up shop here. I feel like it's very uh, risky is what I'm saying and to your point about South Side, when I say reducing the reliance on non-governmental entities, I specifically mean the entities that we're not actively funding to meet emergency response needs, like we wrote South Side a big old check, so like I feel like it would follow that they would be exempt from this because like it's, we're not burdening them with the work, we're giving them the money to do it. All I'm saying is, y'all, I don't wanna hear nobody crying when we're like, dang, I wonder, I wonder why nobody's showing up, because they're tired. Um, I can, I'll can wordsmith it for when we come, uh, when it comes back to us, but people are exhausted and less and less people showed up even to help navigate this last freeze or or there was like reduced capacity. And it was in those conversations that they're like, girl, if there's another flood, good luck, like, I don't know, I don't know what we can do to help you, like we are burnt out. Um, stuff like that, so.
May I propose an edit that may make parties happy? Uh, and this is just off the top, so let's just try it. Um, when we talk about enhancing emergency emergency management, perhaps we explicitly say that what we mean by that is city infrastructure. Um, and where it talks about through coordination, making that a separate sentence and maybe say while coordinating with local partnerships and intergovernmental co- cooperation, but it it really puts the focus on, okay, we're looking at the city infrastructure first, but we're not explicitly saying that we're not gonna coordinate with local partnerships, it's just saying that's a and versus a you know, explicitly saying, okay, let's let's address our infrastructure as a city first.
And that is a, the only, yeah, I don't have problems with anything other than um, just trying to understand a little more clarity on the very last part, the edit that's being proposed at the very end, um, is is just because a- again, I can think of so many different things that require and they're like the city's not responsible for, um, even if it's coordinated, cause it's not that we're saying, oh, we hope somebody shows up, we definitely are having conversations proactively with our local partners, it doesn't mean every single person, but the ones that we work with the most. But like even if it's a fuel, you know, we have to make sure we work with our local uh, convenience stores, for example, to make sure that they have fuel for all of our generators, for our fleet vehicles and all that, that is not gonna be something that we're gonna not be able to reduce reliance on. Even even things like commandeering um, a Walmart or an HEB if we need to to get uh, food for people, so again, that's something we're not gonna be, it's still gonna be non-governmental entity, so that's that's where I'm coming from on it, is just that I don't know that we can adhere to that based on just the overall what's required in an emergency management situation. At that point, it's kinda all 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 hands on deck from everybody, even asking businesses that that are high-power users to reduce their power usage if we need to with our cost, so.
Uh, um, we can just leave it as like wordsmithing if you guys are down, I'm gonna bring it back whenever, but in between now and then, maybe I'll help be better able to articulate the intention. Can you all send me the whatever exists, and I've asked for this already, um, on like reflections or reports on the past two historic flooding events? Cause that, those were what, those extremes are what some of nonprofit leaders are citing, like we cannot show up like that anymore. I have been sent some stuff from the freeze, but my understanding was the new safety uh, or like emergency response person was still fleshing out like a proper format or something, um, but that would be helpful. I got some weird documents that were not helpful at all, they looked like mandatory forms that people need to fill out, but I didn't get like lessons learned, this is what we did, these are areas of growth, this is what we're, you know, like I feel like that, like that has to exist, right?
Well, I I don't know that we do, that it does exist, I mean, I, we will absolutely look for it. And the reason that I will, I will just be very candid is we've gotten into a much more formalized emergency management um, process with everything, with after-action reports and all that, that I don't know necessarily existed at that particular time.
They didn't.
That there was a lot of institutional knowledge in people's heads that just knew what to do when things happened. And so we haven't been able to necessarily um, go back and look and see what all of those records are. But I do know our current emergency management team is looking to not have history repeat itself in that regard and and is working on creating more training and processes and documentation and all that. So I will definitely see what we have, but it may have been that that's really what was available at that particular time. Um, but yeah, point well taken.
I think Ms. Rodriguez had a really good idea that we separate this out. Uh, even to the point of maybe we add another sentence that says, local social service agencies may assist as they are able or as capacity, their capacity allows and and go there, but but I think splitting it up was excellent. I don't wanna, I don't wanna miss a comment from Councilmember Gonzalez.
We, someone mentioned about the, what the city can do. For an example, uh, generators, how many buildings do we have that can hold people, uh, in case power does go out or or they need a place to stay for a couple nights or whatever. I'm talking about the city, not community action or South Side or anybody like that.
Think we bought some generators.
So we uh, actually have very few facilities that uh, are able to uh, are that have full backup generation. However, the emergency management uh, group just recently won a grant. And with that grant, they will provide a permanent generator at the Dunbar Center uh, for emergency situations.
But the Dunbar Center can only hold so many people, I was thinking more something like the Activity Center or the Public Library, which are much bigger and and can hold.
And and don't forget that, I think it was ARPA dollars that we provided for the high school.
Right, we'd wanna have, that's not what the city has, and I understand what you're saying. I was talking more about what the city can do and is prepared for right off the bat.
I was a little surprised that was Dunbar and not, here's the deal, Activity Center, when the water comes up, I can show you the pictures of the debris line for twenty fifteen, this may not be our best option.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct, and and that was one of the reasons why Dunbar was selected. Uh, because the Activity Center is actually uh, partially in the flood plain.
Well, maybe we shouldn't build a city next to it, or across the li- by the library. Brought that up for me. Okay, now that's a question I had, uh, what can the city do and there's not very many places other than Dunbar, is that, am I hearing you correctly? That people can go to, there's no many, there's not that many places other than Dunbar that we have generators for?
Um, a- and I apologize, I'm, it, this is a little bit out of my wheelhouse, but I believe the emergency management group has a an agreement with the school district to also provide a shelter in an emergency situation.
Correct.
Because obviously previously, I'm sorry, Jamie Lee Case, Parks and Recreation Director, as you as you recall, Councilmember, you know, the Activity Center has served as the emergency shelter for for a number of years. But as Mary Hewson was saying, this place in a flood event does become an island. Yes, ma'am, I I've seen it as well, just in the time that I've lived here, you know, fifteen years, so um, it in, you know, it's not the ideal place for a flood event, that's why um, our emergency management team worked very closely with the school district to ensure that the high school uh, will be the most suitable place um, to house people, they also have, you know, the ability to make, you know, cook meals and provide showers and those kinds of things, which while we have shower facilities, we're unable to provide, you know, mass quantities of meals um, as efficiently as the high school would.
And the high school, that's the one we bought that generator or.
Yes. Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay, we can. Are there any further comments or questions? As written, um, enhance emergency management through the city's infrastructure by increasing all hazards and disaster preparedness, response and recovery, the coordination and local partnerships and intergovernmental cooperation. Local service agencies may assist as they are able. Do we wanna go ahead and take the vote? Starting down here, seems like, right there, thank you, Councilmember Amanda, thank you.
I'm a yes.
Yes, correct, thank you. Councilmember Alyssa Garza? As it's written right now?
So that's a, a yes for right now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, ma'am.
I'm a yes, knowing that better wording may come up later.
Okay.
And I'll say that, cause I could.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I don't want to leave out Councilmember Gonzalez online. Is that a yes? Can you hear, can you hear us? Councilmember Lorenzo Gonzalez online, can you hear us? I don't know if he can hear us, but we have the, the phone. All right, thank you. All right, we are now going under um, core government services under outcome B. Ensure operations are funded for the delivery of high-quality customer experiences and community-focused programs and services. Um, the post-it is right here in the middle, so I don't, I I'm not sure, do we want to talk about the strategies or we're leaving it right here? Under ensure operations are funded for the delivery of high-quality customer experiences and community-focused programs and services. That post-it was stuck here.
With mine and I have no changes, just make sure we don't lose sight, but we won't, cause it's unplanned.
All right, so I'm still, um, there was an edit under three, is that, that's something we can disregard? Okay, awesome, thank you, we'll get to second page. But we have a drop-down under support services, under outcome E. E is an eagle, provide necessary resources to internal service departments to support reliable, consistent and effective city operations. We have a post-it by Councilmember Amanda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, under outcome E, uh, my proposed addition, we are talk, we were talking about this earlier, um, but it just puts it into writing. Uh, Hayden, I think I sent it. Um, the addition would be to evaluate uh, all departments' capacity and expertise to manage current responsibilities beyond their standard scope. Um, that's really just doing what we were talking about, we wanna make sure that we're not putting too much work onto officers, onto firefighters, that it's outside their standard scope. Um, and if that work had better be given to certain departments, um, that alleviates some of that additional work that perhaps they didn't initially think they signed up for. So, so this, this bullet is speaking specifically to our insert, internal service departments. So, that's not police or fire. It's going to be your HR, your finance department, your IT department, legal. So, you know, that, that's what this is really meant to, because remember when I said at the beginning, we've talked about a lot, but just the fact that we wanted to make sure that every department could point to something that, that said what they did. And so, this was because a lot of the outward-facing departments are really focused on in a lot of these. And so, this was giving them their little section in terms of what, you know, what their areas are. So, this is dealing with internal services specifically to the city. So, with all that, does this, is this relevant then?
Hope we do this.
Excuse me?
I hope we do this as a routine.
Yeah. Yes. I, I would say that it's probably something that is more like to all core services, you know, versus it being just, just that one. And I might have it in the wrong outcome. Maybe under core government services? That's what I'm thinking, is maybe it's under that. Outcome B, which Ms. Chantel, I think it's on the other page, the one before that one. Yes, ma'am, under outcome B. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, this is a better home for that. I'm fine with that. Yes, I think, I think that works there. Thank you. And Hayden, did I give you that language?
Okay, thank you. And just so we're clear, core government services, ensure operations are funded for the delivery of high-quality customer experiences and community-focused programs and services. Their outcome B. Is that better?
Okay.
And then, as written, evaluate the department's capacity and expertise to manage current responsibilities beyond their standard scope. Right? Everybody follow that?
Yeah.
We have some, possibly, we have looks on faces, I want to make sure.
That's what she just said, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
We're good.
I didn't know if you were thinking of, sorry.
Okay, so the vote, yes? Yes, we're good. All right, Mayor?
I'm not against it, but like I said before, I hope this is what we do on a routine basis. So, I guess I'm okay with it, but we put everything we do on a routine basis. It'd be a really long document. But I'm not opposed to it being there, but what this says to the public is that maybe we're not doing this because we're putting it in here that we need to, so.
You could say continue evaluating.
I could buy that better.
All right, continue evaluating.
Continue evaluating. Okay, we're all good with that one across right now. And do we still have the other council member online? I don't see him.
And instead of the, it might be all. Instead of like making it seem it's about one specific.
Okay. Does that sit well?
Sounds like we're assuming that they continually get assigned responsibilities beyond their standard scope, and I'm not sure we do that. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be a no on this one. I think it needs more work, but I'm not sure what this is telling the public if the, if we think we need to put this in our strategic initiatives. Not that I'm against the concept, but I, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think we want it here. I don't want it here.
And I, I will say, if I could explain intent, it's not even just necessarily giving the public an opportunity to understand. For me, and it might be a surprise, for me, this is giving departments an opportunity to tell us, hey, maybe this is a little bit outside my bounds, and maybe there's other alternatives for that. That's how I am really interpreting it. I know for the public, that may seem confusing as written, but it, it's been talked about both today and yesterday, and I've heard it in previous discussions about, let's talk about police department in, in particular. Hey, I didn't sign up for this. I didn't sign up to be a social worker. I didn't sign up to be XYZ. I wanted to, you know, be a police officer. This allows us to really look at that capacity, because whether it's this current council or historical councils, there may be things that are put on their, their job responsibilities that are outside the scope and that would be better suited to be taken over by other departments. And so, that's sort of my intent behind it, but if you're wanting to workshop it further, I, I can agree with that, too. I'm not opposed to that, to make the intent clearer.
Do we want to go ahead and do a, a revote on it and, and park and lock this for later for you all?
I, I, I'd be fine with looking at, at something different, but I'm going to be a no.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, I think, I understand the vibes, but I don't know if that's like something that needs to be named in a strategic plan.
Right.
Yeah.
So, do we want further conversation or do we want to reboot on what is as written?
Let's reboot.
Okay, all right, so.
I think that's part of like a bigger conversation.
Yeah. Okay, so we are going to vote on this? Okay, all right, I'll start with you.
Vote is a no.
No? Mayor?
No.
We know, but with the, just naming that, I think it's part of a bigger conversation that would be like fun, uh, maybe like a work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, so that was the completion of that particular goal. We have our last goal remaining that's coming up now. Carrie, in a second, and that's environmental protection.
So, we're not going.
We did mobility first yesterday.
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, 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 we got, we got both pages, public safety done. Okay.
Sorry to go back, but you were doing the post-its. I didn't only have post, like, I, I have other things that I submitted to Hayden on the state. Yeah. Yeah, it's just too quick.
Well, I, I think you filled it up here as good.
Yeah, we don't need all that, like, that's.
We need on the big screen.
Got it, yeah.
Okay, so we're back. I'm so sorry, we are not, we have not proceeded to the next one. We have to go. Okay, which one is it?
I don't know. Yeah, and ensure its availability to citizens. I think it would be helpful to add to that.
I'm so sorry, Matthew. Because I prioritize my bond. I think it would be helpful to specify that it's like easily accessible. Oh, wait, so here's the thing, it's going to like be broken down into two. I'm sorry, Hayden. So, it's like kind of two, two ideas, right, to ensure operations. We talked about developing a comprehensive community resource guide, and we said.
It guides back.
Yeah, and then we said, what was it written originally? Ensure it's, ensure its availability to citizens, but like, I, we didn't, and I don't know. It's, how do we make it more easily accessible, not just like how to find it, but also in terms of like language justice and also, what's the other one? More user-friendly. Also, okay, I think this was one of your things, right? Where you're like, we just need to have like a a hub, because that was already there, develop a comprehensive community resource guide.
We've actually had those in the past, but they were, it was a little pamphlet. Need other ways of getting that information out.
Right, and so, I dig the, I think, ensure its availability to citizens. I just, I think that it has, there's been like improvements, but it lacks intentionality when it comes to what does it mean to make it easily accessible to folks? So, I guess, make sure it's easily accessible and easy to find. Like, I submitted some things, but I kind of conflated the two, because it's also part of the resource guide. And then, the second thing is that they're user-friendly. I don't know. I don't know, you guys. Let me workshop this further, but we can come back to it. Because I'm also trying to incorporate some recommendations from folks like Max and other folks and trying to make it so that it's like in one thing, but it's to build on that. We put tons of money towards like translating of things and like putting things out in like different formats, but I, I still feel like it's still kind of lost in the sauce. I don't know what to do to have that as a priority.
It's like we talked about earlier, of the wonderful services that the library is offering. I don't know that everybody's going to think to look under library. Library also has a great list of resources, community resources. I don't know that everybody knows that's the best place to look. And so, going, going from what I'm always saying, from the user's perspective, a resident or visitor's perspective, how do they find such things? I sent y'all a deal on Warren Central Texas. We used to have it really prominent, and then it's lost, and it's not even where we had it before. So, I, I think there's opportunities, and I think we need to recognize that sometimes things have a longer life than a week or two. And so, I, I would suggest, if we don't have it, a new to say, Marcus, this is what you need to know. And more, signing up for Warren Central Texas will be one thing on there.
I'm sending it down.
I will say, I, I've been a huge fan for years, getting these like pamphlets and updates in the mail for our electricity bill. Is it possible, Ms. Garza, do you think maybe like, once we're done with all this stuff, like send something like this out with the link of everything in it, that they can type it down, like QR code for full accessibility? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I put these together. Confuse you, Hayden, but another category is for, when we talk about high-quality customer service experiences, I think most of y'all have heard this. Some of like the, the city-operated portals and systems are not accessible and user-friendly. So, that's like a separate bullet. Don't get me started on the utility portal, but also, or well-known, talk about easily accessible. I think we settled on the term easily accessible to mean both, you know how to access it, you can access it, and you can navigate it, like, again, how the mayor said, it's like viewing it as the user. Yeah, I, I think that's a huge area of growth, even like the, we always talk about, yeah, you can report this on this web app. What is that connect, is it? Yeah, and then there's the, oh, you can report this if you have like an issue with the, submit your form for police, and then even for even things like, we had neighbors trying to submit something to navigate an issue with the, with the marshal's office, and they submitted it, and it hit the PD, and then it was like, no, that's not our lane, and it just like leads to a lot of frustration. So, any, like, city, I'm sorry, not, yeah, assistance programs or portals, maybe just go, try to use them and then fix them.
Can I say something on, on three, a potential edit, and if they're, if people are amenable to it, cool? I understand, you know, wanting to get information out through mail, we know that's very costly, though. And so, if we want to perhaps do it in a way that's more cost-effective, maybe that means, you know, partnering with the school district, partnering with the university, partnering with the chamber to make sure that these items that we create can actually be disseminated to people. I know with the resource guide that the county created, I was able to give that to some of the professors over there at the university, and it literally had a domino effect where they were able to then go and give that to additional people. So, we have people who are already in the community who have access to large swaths of people. And so, perhaps working on partnerships like that to help disseminate this information could alleviate some of that, at, at least as a starting point.
There a comment, city manager?
Rodney and I are both saying we like it because we're working on kind of our, oh, I'm sorry, Lauren, I didn't see you over there. Go for it. Hi, Lauren Surley, Director of Communications and Intergovernmental Relations. So, we do actually work with a task force with the school district, with a lot of our other partners within the community to get out information whenever we have really big, big programs that are going. And more often than not, the school district and, and the city really play game, play well together. And whenever we have something, it goes in their newsletter, it goes on their website, that kind of thing. So, we are already working on those relationships and making sure that we are building those up, for sure. In regards to the Community Resource Guide, we are in the design phase of that. So, we have a lot of that information coming together that's going to be in a physical pamphlet as well as available online digitally. Those community resources that, that were mentioned earlier, those are on our homepage, as well as the alert signup for Warren Central Texas, just a little button right below the banner. So, it's all right there, easy to get. Of course, there are always places to improve. Unfortunately, technology is always changing in a very, very fast pace. So, it, it's just always a learning, learning curve for us and, and trying to make sure that we're keeping up with it and keeping the over a thousand pages on our website up to date. So, definitely learning, not saying we're perfect, we're not, so we're, we're always trying to improve.
And I was just going to say, thank you for that, Ms. Surley. Is that on the, the, the ads, as far as ensuring the city-provided assistance programs and operated portals and systems are easily accessible, navigable, and user-friendly? That, that aligns with what we're wanting to do. And so, we're working on the, as I mentioned, One City, Together We, Together We Serve. So, that is something that I think it aligns very perfectly with what we're dealing with already and what we're looking at. So, I, I think it's good.
Yeah, just one more thing, because I know we were talking about accessibility. We did, just in the last few months, we rolled out our new website, Accessibility Site Improve. And so, we are striving to have a ninety-two percent overall return, of return rate, so that we are all accessible to, to all disabilities. I will, I'm happy to say that in just the last three months that we've started to implement this, the lowest number we have within our organization is eighty-one point three percent. So, we are very, very close to already hitting, going above and beyond the industry standard on that.
Website?
Yes, for the entire website.
Awesome. Yeah, I, I still think everybody should try all those portals and then let me know. So, but yeah, I do appreciate, I know you've been updating us on that. Before you get mad.
Something that Mr. Baker had really pushed through and tried to deploy like ARPA money for, and I, I appreciate that. I think that's a big improvement. But yeah, that's all I got.
Do we want to vote on three and then four?
Yeah, I was thinking more so like including partnering with communities or including through community partnerships to help disseminate, like making it so clear that, to help disseminate the, the information.
Other comments? Council member Garza, do you have a comment?
I, I was just going to say, I think it's, it's fine to name that. Yeah, now that I think about it, I have been seeing more efforts for that whenever I see the city table the night events, trying to amplify all our resources, but I don't, I, but you're meaning here like the, the resource guide in specific, right?
Yeah, it's just like to help disseminate, I mean, if we want to say following disseminate like the actual resource guide, then that's fine. It might be redundant, though, since it's already listed.
Yeah.
And then, I believe, Mayor, you had a comment as well?
Can I add one more thing? Sorry. Lauren Surley, Director of Communications, IGR. I'm happy to send y'all the list of our task force who we are already currently contacting. If y'all have some other individuals in the, in the city that y'all think we should be working with to disseminate our information, I'd be more than happy to, to add those and build those relationships.
Definitely, let's talk.
Yeah, I'll send them to you. Thank you.
I, Amanda, did you mention the Hayes County Resource Guide?
I did mention it, um, mainly because that one's a pretty comprehensive one. And so I was hoping, uh, hoping that, you know, obviously it's going to be great to have one that's specific to the city. But perhaps when we're talking about disseminating the information, just get it all at one time, maximize the opportunity.
The reason why I asked that, cause I, I think I heard it like when I was trying to type out is. For example, the, I, I think it's Peyton that, is it, you're talking about the one that Peyton made, right? So I don't know. Who spearheaded this is probably uh, Mr. Gonzalez at the Health Department, but. Every meeting that I've gone to. That one of like the Health Department staff is at or others, it's kind of trickled through. Like they'll have like little card stocks even with the QR code because they know that um. Whenever they're like new to committee meetings or coalitional meetings, usually that's like the one opportunity that. Other like community leaders and stakeholders have to be in front of. Somebody represents the city and they're usually bombarded with questions on things that they don't even know. And other things. And so it's, it's little things like that, like. I appreciate that you guys have put in a lot of resources to even having like a list of all stakeholders. Cause I know when I first got into office, it was like. We all have like each little department, right? You know, um, community enhancement has their list and da, 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 da. And you guys have made um, progress in like trying to come up with like one directory, especially for like comms, but um. Yeah, I think that that's like, I'm just naming that like a creative solution. Um. Everybody, uh, everybody, a lot of people are sharing out those things. Um. Yeah, that's a really good guy too. You can even link it, but yeah.
I, I will have to go and take a look at it. Those are good uh, options to look at. We are looking at something kind of similar, but. Um, I'll go in and see if I can gather some other ideas from that.
They're literally just printing it on a card stock card. It's like not super genius, yeah.
We were looking at a magnet, so is that a one up?
Thank you. Mayor, you, you had a comment? To disseminate. The information. I think we just got more words than we need and um. Or it, it isn't where I'd like it to be, but yeah, I'm, at least we get the concept out there.
Could we say um, while utilizing community partners to help disseminate the information? Do we like that?
Uh, better.
And utilize community partners?
Well, here's the deal. I think what we need to do is take the avail- availability to citizens and put it separately.
At the end?
You know, how are we going to get it out? We're getting people to help us get it out. And at the end, it's to the citizens is who we're trying to reach. So the sentence is getting awkward, although the, the, the thought is good.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to send in a structure change. So perhaps uh, develop a community or a comprehensive community resource guide. And utilize community partners to help disseminate the information to ensure its availability to citizens. There?
Better. I think what we're doing is we're developing a community, comprehensive community resource guide for the public. And then we talk about, okay, now that we've defined what it is, how are we getting it out?
So two part?
Two sentences.
Okay, two sentences is fine.
For the, no comma, for the community. Oh, we already say community, for the public. And we can change the word public if we need to.
Could we say like while utilizing community? In that second sentence?
Sure.
Yeah. So starting it off with the while utilizing community, like community partners. Is that, is that better, mayor?
Yeah. And then I would just take the two residents, because we've already said for the public. And again, the guide is not just for residents. Probably.
Prevent the redundancy.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So we'll eliminate residents at the end. So as written right now, develop a comprehensive community resource guide for the public. While utilizing community partners to help disseminate the information. Yeah. And then of course it'll, it'll be segmented into different. Sections.
Just for the sake of like grammar.
What you're saying, I, I still would rather it be. Two sentences because utilizing the community partners becomes the big thing. And the big thing is that we're going to have the resource guide for the public. And then how we get it out is.
Yeah, no me importa. Whatever you like that allows us to take the vote.
Well, I think it could be, you know, through, you know, handouts, through um, through the website. Through, I mean, there's going to be a lot of ways we're going to get that information out. I think website would certainly be one of them. All right. So develop a comprehensive community resource guide for the public, utilize community partners to help disseminate. Is that what I'm hearing? All right, ready to take the vote? All right. Yes, yes. Yes, yes, yes. All right. Thank you. And we can go and drop down to four. Um, it's written now as ensure city provided assistance programs and city operated portals and systems. Are easily accessible, navigate, navigable and user friendly.
Lookable. I mean, I know we already do it, but do we want to put, I know you mentioned language justice earlier. Do we want to word that in this sentence or? Just to get what you were talking about?
I mean, the thing is, there's like so much more that goes into. It, there's like accessibility, right? Like how Lawrence covering it. And then there's that, I don't. I, I don't think we need to add that level of specificity right now. But it's, I don't know, because sometimes I, it's like, that's too much detail. And then I have an expectation like, well, I, well, how was I supposed to know you meant language justice? And it's like. God, what? Cause it's part of a framework, like Google it. Um, but then it's like, no, you Google it and it's very confusing. Um, when you actually try to look at the uh, the best practices. I don't, I don't know.
Okay, forget I said that. Let's just, I don't, I don't know. I'm just hoping that you've heard it uh, enough that you're going to take that into consideration. So. Or say you don't have money to do it later.
So do we want to keep four or eliminate four altogether?
No, just not add language justice.
Okay. Keep four. Okay. So we're going to go ahead and do the vote then on it. We got a yes. How about you? Councilmember Alyssa, yes. Thank you, yes. How about you? What do you think?
I trust mayor's gonna fix it.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Any more on this particular goal before we move on to the last one? We're good? All right. Now we can get to the last one. All right. Thank you all for that. Refinement of that. All right. We have environmental protection. The goal statement under environmental protection is advance responsible stewardship of the community's natural, cultural and historical resources. Through varied environmentally friendly policies and practices. So we have a comment here. Um. Councilmember Garza, would you like your, your post-it?
I'm not, I'm done.
You're done? So we can then drop down to here where we have outcome B. And that's where I think we was going to start. Where we had under outcome B, environmentally friendly growth. Promote environmental protections and sustainable building practices through codes and processes. And we had a post-it from you, mayor. Yeah. Were you indicating here on the strategies? Under strategies, implement the preferred scenario map. Is that what your post-it was? Hold on. The preferred scenario. We can use it. I'm not sure how we implement it.
Yeah, it's, it's using it. When someone comes in and says they want to build something, the first thing we go to is our preferred scenario map to see if the land use is appropriate for the thing that they want to do. So that would be implementing the map.
That's when someone comes in. That's when someone comes in and asks.
Yes, we don't run out and.
Yeah, if you make any calls with the housing. Change of housing. There were calls to implement certain things that we can't go make people do. And so as people come in and, and want to change things in our community zone, whatever. We're going to use that, but we can't go out and take all the changes that are in that map and go make it happen. So it's the implement word that is.
Utilize maybe?
Anything like that is great. As, as.
As adopted or something.
No, it's not as adopted. It's, it's the implement and. Utilize. I, I think we can be better just in order to, let's see, the top has already said. To guide growth in our community. We will be using the preferred scenario map or something like that. I think that's just a, a little cold and a little. Not really where we want to go.
Mayor, yeah, how do you feel about that? To put it at the end, utilize the preferred scenario map to guide growth. That way it's, it's explicitly.
It's better than what we've got.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, sure. Does that help? Okay. So we have utilize the preferred scenario map to guide growth in the community. All right, we're good. Let's take the vote. Yeah, yes, mayor, yes, yes. I don't want to lose you, council member Alyssa Garza. Yes, yes. Awesome. Thank you. And we have our last page, that second page to that same goal. We have under outcome C, that's under the resilient infrastructure. Just a reminder, um, incorporate resiliency into existing and future city infrastructure, planning, construction, operations and maintenance. Underneath that strategy, we had under two. Under outcome C, continue to develop and maintain emergency operations and emergency preparedness plan. We have a comment from councilmember Amanda.
Hope to make it swift. Related to, yes, related to resilient infrastructure and um, I've been trying to workshop this. So if it needs to be refined, let me know. Um, but I know that we have city led projects where we can actually work to mitigate things like air pollution. Whether that's through putting water on dirt to make sure it doesn't end up in the, so I just wanted to explicitly word. And I'm struggling with the, the wording. So I have here, and we can refine it, but I have here invest in city infrastructure to combat. Air pollution. To proactively mitigate health risks to residents.
Think we have a comment, mayor? Wasn't one of those points is during construction? I'm sorry? Uh, the, the dust, make sure we've got the watering down and that kind of thing. The, the health effects. The adverse health effects of construction when it's like right outside your house.
Yeah. So it, it, that lets out particulate matter. Particulate matter has a ton of health consequences like asthma and those things. Um, when we had the conversation on Monday with members uh, in the body of skill. That was brought up that there was a project that was being done and you know, some of that dust was coming on to their homes and. And there was those, those issues. And so this allows us to really let residents know that. In the case, we do have control over a, a particular project, you know, whereas like text dot and those things are a little bit out of our control. Um, that we will prioritize doing what we can to mitigate health risks as it relates to air pollution.
Councilmember from a word smithing standpoint, Joe Pantone, Assistant City Manager. Um, to that interest, we may want to look at the beginning of that sentence. When you talk about investing in city infrastructure. The most common interpretation is that the city is going to fund something and build it. And really what you're talking about is really operationalizing. This to the point where some of this is regulation. So it's not necessarily investing in city infrastructure. So we may just want to say something like employ strategies to combat air pollution to mitigate.
Yeah, yeah, that's perfect. Or like develop guidelines or whatever the, yeah. Just to make it so clear that that's something that we're going to be prioritized.
And could I add to that? Sometimes we hear that we have issues, not just with the installation of infrastructure construction, but private construction. So I'm wondering, looking at where we are in section C resilient infrastructure. If this particular strategy might move up to environmental stewardship, which is a little bit more broad and could apply.
I like that.
To public and private.
That's a good call. I like that. Good catch.
Under outcome A. Comments around that? Okay, though, what, which outcome? It's going up to outcome A. A is an apple? Okay. Yes, under environmental stewardship. Is that good? And as written, employ strategies to combat air pollution to mitigate health risk to residents. Right? Do we want to go ahead and vote there? Got a yes? Alyssa? Yes, mayor? Yes. Coram before. Thank you. All right. And that movement was to A. All right. We are dropping down to outcome D. Outcome D, environmental programs. Promote innovative programs and educate residents about environmental resiliency. This was a pink post-it. I think this may have been. I think Ms. Garza.
We'll steer clear.
It, it had nothing. Given the fact that she's got all her notes written up.
Yes.
And we will be seeing this sometime, I think in February for adoption.
Yes.
I'm sure she'll provide. Sounds good. All right. Then that drops us down to the very last one. Under outcome D still, and I'm assuming we're at two. Would seek out opportunities to secure grant funding and build partnerships to develop environmental education programs and implement environmental improvement projects?
That's my fault. I should have put it on one, um, related to the Edwards Aquifer. Um, so I'm not, I'm just proposing in addition to this. Um. So it talks about continued participation and implementation, duh, 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 duh. I wanted to add at the end of that, um. While exploring additional proactive measures to educate residents and city departments on water conservation strategies. Um, this idea was following our work session that we had last week. Um, and so this is just letting people know that while we go and ask them to do what they can to conserve water, we're giving ourselves that same energy. Um, and also, you know, this is just an issue that we need to be as proactive as possible. And so it's just explicitly naming that.
Like maybe some reuse water at the new city hall complex and.
Yeah, stuff like that, you know, it just.
Lead by example.
Exactly. It's hard to ask people to do something that we're not doing ourselves.
All right. So as written, continue participation and implementation of the Edwards Aquifer Habitat Conservation Plan. While exploring additional proactive measures. To educate residents and city departments on water conservation strategies. We have a comment over here? Yeah, and that should be separate. A separate item. And we'll take a.
Yes, uh, just real quick, uh, city council Jamie Lee Case, Parks and Recreation Director. Um, in that same vein, since you did speak about, you know, water conservation, obviously our baseball fields do take quite a bit of water. I'm thrilled to say that we are. So, so close to having our Raymond Lucio fields on reclaimed water. Um, the last bit of it is just for us to run the lines. So we've been, this has been a. Labor of love for my team. Um, it's taken about a year because we've had to run, work with electric, water, wastewater. It has been a great collaborative project across multiple departments. Um, so we will have a big, huge celebration uh, once we actually bring this thing online. So we're super excited about it.
That's what's up. That's great. That's good to hear. Thank you.
What you have there? All right, just says his. Good.
Could we say explore and implement?
Yeah. Say the action there was. Right. So we've, we've separated as you all can see. And so now we have two, under D. Explore and implement additional proactive measures to educate residents and city departments on. to educate residents and city departments on water conservation strategies.
Can we take out additional?
Fine by me.
Explore and implement proactive measures to educate residents and city departments on water conservation strategies. Yes, all right, let's take the vote. Got a yes. Councilmember Mendoza, Mayor Jane, yes, and then yes. Councilmember Amanda, we have four, got a quorum.
Of course, we're not voting, we're expressing opinion.
Yep, expressing opinion and voting on the modification of it. Well, oh, not the modification, no, just the light text. Oh, the year, no.
We're expressing our opinions and our preference because we need four to move it forward.
That's it, yes. All right, that brings us to the end. Can you give yourselves a round of applause, everybody? Oh, come on, that was a little bit weak. Give yourselves a round of applause. Thank you all so much for the work that you have done for the citizens of San Marcos. This is amazing. Um, I've had an amazing time just getting to know you all and I love the passion around the room and the commitment to these citizens of San Marcos. Thank you so much for giving, allowing me to facilitate this session. Thank you. I'll hand it back over. Thank you. I'll hand it over to Mayor.
Thank you, Chantel. Um, also just want to make sure that I say thank you, Mayor and Council. I know these are tough decisions and I know that, um, they're important decisions though. And, uh, a lot of great discussion over the last couple of days. I also wholeheartedly want to thank, um, everybody who contributed to putting this information together. There was a lot of great information that was conveyed. I want to especially thank, uh, Carrie Fontenot in my office as well as Hayden Meagle for leading the effort of getting everything together and coordinating everything. Uh, but just definitely want to, a such a big a shout out, because we have a wonderful team and I'm blessed to be able to, um, to work with everybody and to work with council. So thank you very much. Uh, the community is stronger for your leadership and just very much appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Yeah, again, thanks to all the staff, um, that put together the basics, the background information for us. Good information is, I'm sure that's pulled, pulled from orientations and some other places. Uh, but that's great. Also, the preliminary work on the strategic initiatives is, is helpful and helping us work our way through it from concept to getting words on a page. And we understand that there may be some flexibility there, uh, before all is said and done. When is this coming back? Second meeting in February, probably?
Probably second meeting in February, if not first meeting in March, but hopefully February.
All righty. And we're now to the question and answer session with the press in public, seeing none. Ms. Trevino, I believe you said no one had signed up? All right, in that case, uh, being as how we have concluded the items on our agenda, we will adjourn at one forty-one PM. Happy weekend, everybody.